Thank you. We had a joint workshop of the City Council and Planning Commission. Are there any reports to be made from that?
There is no required reporting for that. It was an open and public meeting.
Thank you. If you cared about it, you would have been there. Probably some of you were. Okay, are there any items to be added or deleted? No, sir. Okay, then we will start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. I will be leading. Please stand if you're able.
Hey, Lord, we thank you for your leadership of our community. We ask that you help us to be good followers of your will and do the best we can for our citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whom the ancestors were.
Okay, we'll go straight into our agenda. After we have, of course, our generic presentation from the audience. Any items not on the agenda from the public? We have one request for a comment from Jim Cook. Please come forward.
All right, okay here, right about here. Thank you. I would like to thank you for letting me stand at this lectern to address you, the mayor, the council people, about a couple of points of safety within the city. I want to thank you. Positive, I'm going to like to thank David Cook of the planning department. For three years, I've been working on a she-shed opposite of a man cave, and he's been with me for years, working on it and listening to all my questions and all that. I want to give him kudos on that. Thank you. Not all negative.
My first item here, I'm trying to make it quick, but maybe I'll find it over here, is Heritage Park Mission. If I were to design the street there, it would be like that. Somewhere along the line, many years ago, we were designing the street there. Designed it like that, well, there is a curve sticking out into the street. And like they say in one book, it looks about the words. Here is a set of pictures, and these are members. I'm already showing the fire chief, who is the one who has met a lot there through disasters. And they see disasters out there. They see a lot of sad things. This is a disaster waiting to happen. My wife and I, a couple months ago, were traveling west there on Mission. It was in the evening, about seven, eight o'clock, on a day 25, 30 miles an hour, and boom! My car hit that curve right there. I've been on that street 100 times before. What was I doing? I don't care if it's smoke. Maybe just thinking about Christmas. So I moved out of here. I had to cripple home, cripple home. And telling my wife, friends, and family that, you know, what if there's a small Fiat, a little smart car, or motorcycle that hits that curb? And I think I'd definitely try to get paralysis to death, even if the person is doing something not right. Maybe texting, possibly DUI. But I tell you, with the law enforcement in here, the penalty for DUI, sir, for texting does not get this fine. Possibly a prison penalty for DUI, by the way. All it takes, oh, by the way, in the corporate world, I'm retired after many years. If I had anything to consider, someone would say, hey, Mr. Cook, do you have a she-shed? What is your she-shed? Well, I think a jackhammer out there. You've got pictures of jackhammering that curb. And the street is green there. It's all it takes. That's presentation number one. So get rid of that curb. It could be one of your family that gets hurt. I want to thank you for that. We're too proud of you. This one here is not really a safety issue, although there's a second one involved after this. Mountain view, right here, near Monte Street. It's a small street, about five houses and two businesses south of the Betterment Boulevard. When one goes east, right here near Monte, there's a street sign that says Amopolous. But on the left side, there is no street sign on the northwest corner. One has to go four houses up there, and there's a street sign that says, "Mira Monte," because I hear about ten houses. And the street sign there says, "Amopolous." That is not Amopolous. My house is right there. I live on Mira Monte. Not Amopolous. For four years, I've been living here at that house, I've called the city, five to six times, about once twice a year, to say, hey, can we get rid of that sign right there? What if I take it down? No, 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 don't you dare take me down. It's a safety thing. I'm still leaving. It's not a safety issue. It's kind of a burr in my side. Why is that sign there? It needs to be taken down. This is Mira Monte. And then, right here, there is no sign. One of us is traveling here to make a left turn on Mira Monte. I've had friends and delivery people get lost right there. I tell them to make a left turn, but as you know, a lot of people have trouble with the left and right, they get lost. There's no street sign there. Okay, no big thing. I've only been living for eight years. The next thing I miss, and I want to thank you for listening, passes to the property department. This is a residential area, and we know there's a 25 mile speed limit, but there are no sidewalks. Right here on Amopolous, there's a bus that picks up and drops children about 2:30, 3:00 in the afternoon, and they're walking in the street because there are no sidewalks. I'm not asking for the sidewalks. Speedboats, I know, take a lot of maintenance. I know. Cars get in and move down, and they're very expensive. These stop signs will help. One of these days, a person will come around here and see them at 40, 45 miles an hour, Saturday nights, to run in here and get a house. When I watch the news in the evening, over in the elevator, if you ask where the news podcasts come from, I see once in a while cars pshh, carrying off of an intersection, especially into the house. More importantly, the pedestrians, there's children out there walking in the sidewalk. And like, I suppose, even not telling the schools, when there's no sidewalks, you're supposed to walk on the opposite side of the street facing the traffic. And every shared vehicle, you can fly on that, high five. They're supposed to be facing the traffic. Cars from the work, they don't, they're walking in the traffic. It's another tragedy, we may have. I'm asking, I'm praying, because these stop signs there, maybe there's something between the something, pedestrian in the street, so the 15 miles an hour, or just 15 miles per hour speed, or 10, 15, something here. It's all necessary. And I pray to you for that. I want to thank you and report my.
I was just going to comment that Google Maps calls it Amopolous. You live on Amopolous, according to.
I'm reading about the city of Loma Linda with my waters. Now, I either trust or say Loma Linda, say Mira Monte. As you know, Google, right about 9:00, 9:10, 9:11, 9:12, I'm at 4:00 for 10:00. I hate what happens. In closing, whoever thinks they can have water presentation, I'd like to shake that person's hand. I've done water for longer than four years, and code people are under, sorry about that. But we're trying to make it worse landscapes. We are in drought, out of here, it's raining all of a sudden, it's wetting up, climate. We need to conserve the water. And I'm talking about in front of the building, there's grass out there. I'm sorry, I know there's some people like that, but drought, water conservation means drought. There's some beautiful homes right there, drought like that. Not cats, it's a saint. Not too much breathing, I say. I want to thank you very much for letting me speak.
May I respond on a couple of items?
We'll ask the attorney.
Yes, the city manager could give a brief response. We can't obviously take any action.
Yes. Just wanted to let you know, in regard to Amopolous and Mira Monte, the area used to be part of the county of San Bernardino, which the city annexed a couple of years ago, and which at that time, since we annexed it, we added street light in the area. We added the pavement rehabilitation. We paved the street in this neighborhood. But what happened with regard to the sidewalk is we didn't have enough right-of-way to install the sidewalk. The city had to go acquire the right-of-way for the sidewalk. That's the reason why you have no sidewalk. With regard to Mission Road, where they have a ball at the end of the median, the reason for we put that in was the resident along the area requested that, in form of traffic calming device. So the whole idea to put that ball at the end of the median is for people to slow down. That was the reason why.
I want to thank you very much for your reply, sir. In my video, you have the pictures here. One backs up 50, 75 yards. Many areas where there is something like that, which I've never seen in my life, typically there is that sign saying that the land is empty, or like that, John, there is no sign like that. At night, although there are the little tiny reflectors on there, I don't think, I'm super sober, and I just didn't see it again. You can notice the title there on my picture, it says litigation prevention, sir. Okay. There's a tall potter there, litigation prevention. It's going to happen one of these days. All you need is a good person in your board that says, "Wrong." Okay.
Would this be, would this be something that would be presented to the Traffic Safety Committee?
Yes, we can, but what happened is, we, before, in addition to this, we put in a stop sign, like three of them, three or four of them, up and down Mission. And then the residents said, and it was part of traffic calming too, with the auto stop sign, and then people said, please, remove it. So we did remove the stop sign, with the exception of one, I think, was the only one left in there. And then, then just started speeding again, and I just don't have a solution for it. Now, to put up the sign, wave the sign, I can do that, but I hate to remove the median.
Yeah, I, my personal belief is that popped tires and fatal accidents are not a good traffic calming strategy, but somehow making it very visible would be, would be a key. If we need that device there, somehow making sure it's very clear, that helps calm the traffic, you know, and people understand what it's, what it's trying to do there. So, I don't know how visible it is, but I can drive down there as well and take a look.
You know, in terms of speeding on Mission, the city recently put up some signs on Beaumont that flash, and I thought the signs were, there was something faulty with them, and then I realized, no, they go wacko if you're driving too fast. And, yeah, well, it doesn't only flash, but then everything changes. And it's so annoying that I'm driving the speed limit now on Beaumont, and it's, so maybe if it works on Beaumont, something like that could work, help on Mission as well. It's a negative reinforcement to speeding, that's for sure.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move to item number one, Presentation Advisory Commission on Water Policy.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for giving me a little bit of time this evening to talk to you about the Advisory Commission for Water Policy. You'll be hearing another presentation immediately following this. That presentation is an item that has been discussed extensively by the Advisory Commission for Water Policy. It was formed in 1987 as a body to give my board, I'm president of the board, my name is Susan Longville, for our board to get input before we made major decisions that affect regional water supply. As history has shown us, we were much more successful when we worked together, and working together, we can't stay in silos. We need to work with one another. So the Advisory Commission is made up of these 21 bodies, and the only people who sit on this, on this Advisory Commission are elected officials, city council members, board members from special districts, and it is, it is because, at the end of the day, the decisions that we make affect your residents, and we need to be talking with elected officials on the front end before our board makes a decision. This body meets, well, this body meets four times a year. I'll tell you about that again. Just four times a year, and they vote on whether they believe that the item that's going to go before our board has their support. Do they have confidence in it? Are they ready to move forward? And if they're not ready to move forward, believe me, all five members of my board say, you know, we're not ready. We're going to work closer with our partners before we do it. Valley District, as many of you, if you've lived here a long time, will remember, the voters decided that, that we would join the state water project, that we would, so our residents, your residents, are our ratepayers, and they pay property taxes to San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, and that funds the capital costs of the state water project. That's the water from Northern California that we'll bring down here to recharge our groundwater basins. So what you're looking at now is you're actually looking at our water supplies as our urban water management plans show them. This, this represents the water in our groundwater basins. This is the rainfall we get. This is where we look at what we think future demand is going to be, and then we say, hey, we're going to add 10% because we don't know if we're right. Whoops, go back here. Now what you're looking at is you're looking at the cumulative change in storage in our groundwater basin. And you can see that over the years, since 1934, we had rainy periods where our groundwater basin got way high, resulting in, in liquefaction potentials in the south end of the basin, and not a good situation. Then we went through 20-year droughts. This is about the time that we were formed, that we said, you know, we have to join the state water project. We don't want to join Metropolitan. We want to have our own imported water supply. The voters voted to do that, and we've been going, and we got back up to a good amount, to a pretty good range. We like to stay in here. We want to keep room, so when it rains, we can put water in our basin without getting in a dangerous state. But as you can see now, we are in a 20-year drought, and we have hit historic lows. So water, you know, is essential. It represents our potential for future growth. It's the quality of our life. It's, it's our environment, and it's also critical for life. So we invested, so it's, as I said, you know, here we've got, you know, the water in our groundwater basins, we've got our local supplies, and then we add on top all the other supplies, state water project supplies, you know, recycled water supplies, rainwater capture. And as if you look at this, you know, you can see the demand right here. So we are planning to be able to meet future needs, but we can't afford to be wrong. There's no, there's no margin for, for air here. And state water project, the water that, that your residents pay in their property taxes, is a very cost-effective supply for us, and that's because the capital costs are paid by people in their property tax, and we're only charging here for the, for the costs of bringing, of bringing it down here, the electricity, the actual, the actual direct charges. Other things that we're working on developing is recycled water supplies. We're working very closely to increase our stormwater capture, so that we can use our recharge basins with the flood control district to catch more water. And obviously, we're never going to do ocean desal, and thank goodness, we don't have to have desalters. You know, we've managed not to need them. So this is the water we're talking about, the state water project water. So there are important investment decisions, the one you're going to hear about next from, from Mr. Cozad. These decisions will affect your customers, they affect our ratepayers. We want, if you are participating in the Advisory Commission, what you'll know is that we explore every option. We take our time, we try to work together to determine what's the fair share when we make capital investments. You know, there's no bullies in the room, and, and we're all, we're all in this together. So I'm here today on behalf of my board, San Bernardino Valley, who listens to you. This evening, the chair of our commission, his name is Dick Corney, he's from the San Bernardino Valley Water Conservation District. He'd be here with me tonight, he couldn't make it, but he chairs these meetings, and we'd like to see you. We'd like to see you as often as we possibly can. Some of the things that we talked about last year, we talked about, you know, California water fix, the tunnel up in, in the delta. We talked about when we should be selling state water project water, what, what constitutes having a surplus. We talked about how to share the cost of state water project for sustainability, which you're going to be hearing about in the next, in the next presentation, and other things, you know, the planning efforts, the stormwater capture projects. The meetings only last about an hour and a half. They're, they're done in lay, in laypeople terms, so that you will understand them. We know that you have a representative. Maybe you don't have an alternate for that representative from your city council. We hope that you'll take the time to make, I'm here to get you interested and say, come and join us. They're held on Thursday evenings at 6:30 in the evening, and it will be time worth, worth spending, and it will make an impact. You know, you'll feel more prepared for the presentation you're going to hear tonight. And so this is, this is our efforts to try and bring up attendance, so that there's closer to 21 people at the table four times a year. So thank you very much, and thank you for the work you do. 20 years ago, I spent, I ran for the city council. I spent eight years on the city council. I know how hard you work. I didn't even throw in my hat for a third term. I could not balance career and family and do it that much further. So I know, you know, what a labor of love it is to do the work you do, and thank you for what you do for Loma Linda. Good evening.
Thank you for that. Next, we have another water district presentation from Daniel Cozad.
And I'm sorry, on the, on the, on the agenda, it said Valley Water Municipal Water District. He asked you from the Water Conservation District.
I was going to correct that. Names are very similar, with slightly different jobs, Mayor Riggsby and Mayor Protem Duper. My name is Daniel Cozad. I'm with the San Bernardino Valley Water Conservation District. I appeared before you before. I appreciate you taking the time. I know you have a lot of things on your agenda. I have a lot of things on my agenda tomorrow for my board, so I'm going to get you through as quickly as possible. The great part is that, that Susan covered a number of the slides that I have, so that big thick stack of slides, you'll be able to cheat on those just a little bit and, and get through them a little bit quicker. Some of these are just to give you a general idea, as, as Susan Longville's slides were, to understand sort of what we do with the water that we get and where the water that you pump out of the basin comes from. You can see the large majority of that is from local rainfall, with the exception of last year, you know, it's been a little bit drier than we would like it to be. You'll see the results of some of that shortly. You also see that there's some recycled water, and then that state water project that, that was talked about before is about 23% of that water. It didn't used to be as much, and in the future, it will be more. And the purpose of what we're going to talk about is how we get the allocation that is available to us here, so that we have it when we need it in the future. So you saw this slide, local rainfall is no longer enough. That's a great success story. That means we've got enough people who love to live here and work here and contribute to the tax base that, that we need to run our organizations and our cities. That's a good thing, and we want to continue. Certainly, Loma Linda's developed and expanded since the time I, I moved to this area and is continuing to. So we want to make sure that we have enough water for that. It looks like a bleak answer unless you think about all the other sources of water that are available to you. Safe yield is the amount of water that, and I always get in trouble with this, it's the amount of water that God gives us. It's the amount of rain that falls naturally in the hydrologic world we live in, and you can pump that same amount or an amount similar to that out. So that's safe yield. That's kind of like you put some money in your savings account, you take some money out. If you don't take out more than you've put in, you're within the safe yield of your savings account. Well, this basin, we've learned in the last 100 years how to run it at much higher than its safe yield. How do we do that? Well, we pump it down, and then the thing that never happens in your, in your savings account is when you're not looking in a good year, it fills back up for you. That's sort of a miracle, right? I mean, you have this great savings account that earns interest when you take the money out. That's great. I wish I could figure that one out. It works for us most of the time. It doesn't work during drought periods, and you can sort of see what's happened with the, the amount of safe yield. Only, only for a little while have we been underneath the safe yield for the basin. So we've been using that interest earnings, if you will, for a while. These are complicated-looking graphs, but if you look at sort of the up and down, that black line, 20-year sort of average, you can see that the average rain we've received is less than it had been during the period before. And we don't know why that is. It may have been that we were in a very long wet year period during the development of California, but that's certainly been true. We've had a couple of large droughts during this time. We had a nice wet year, you can see there in yellow, last year. So far this year, we're on track for one of those drier years. So in the balance of supply and demand we're talking about, we've got demands that exceed the normal average supplies that are available. And you can see the supplies that are up there include voluntary state water project, SWP state water project purposes, precipitation, and surface water and groundwater. So that's where all the water comes from, those are your supplies. And then you've got agency demands, and if you're out of balance, that means you're draining your savings account. And the nice thing is, we have all those, you saw a version of the slide before you, we have all those other options that we can bring to bear, recycled water and state water project water. If you stack those back up, we have well enough supply, not only for the folks who are here now. I get this question all the time from all sorts of different places. How can you be from a Water Conservation District and say it's okay to continue to develop? This is the answer to that. We've made for 100 years the investments necessary to be able to develop the land that was here. The people who first came here made investments in the land and the water to be able to homestead this area and turn it into grows. And we've done that consistently, continuously, sometimes more, sometimes less, and this last, we think this will be the last work that we need to get capital projects and purchase state project water to make sure we can continue that into the future. So you see that sustainable line over there? That's what, that's the water that would be here if we had purchased all the water that was available to us. We've paid for the infrastructure. Well, our forefathers, people before us who paid those, those tax rates, paid for the infrastructure, and we are today. If we had purchased it, we would be much closer to what we consider the sustainable management zone. So that's where we'd like to stay. So the groundwater council is all about putting together the money to make sure that we can stay in that sustainable range. Everybody likes sustainable. Everybody's got a different definition of it, but the goal is to get everyone to pay their share, a little bit, in a fair way, so that no one is supporting the groundwater council more than they should be, and nobody's getting a free ride. So we asked all of the agencies' engineers to help us put together this thing called the Equitable Allocation Model. You saw a description in your package in that long agreement that you have, and these were the goals that they had. And the higher production an agency has, in other words, the more water they use, that your cost would be higher. If you conserve more, your costs would be lower. You need to do this process either way, whether you are an ardent, take out your grass conservative person. person or a, "I love my grass, I want to use my grass, I want to grow more grass." Either way, you need to have water available to do that. The purpose here isn't to tell you you have to do one or the other, just to make sure that we're filling the basin adequately to accomplish both of those. Very inexpensive water costs, the cheapest water available is what we're looking to buy. The added advantage of that is when we're buying it, it's when there's large quantities available, it's also very high quality. So buying the highest quality water for the cheapest possible rate when there's lots of it available makes perfect sense. The problem is, just like your budget, if Jard comes back to you and says, "I need a million dollars to buy this cheap, high-quality water this year," you open the books and say, "You know, we didn't budget for a million dollars for water this year." Well, it's a great deal, it's a good idea, we should do this. So we figured out that what we need to do is amass a little bit of money all the time so that in those years when it's really available, we're able to do that. That's sort of the goal, to about $3.4 million as a group is what's necessary to be able to fill that hole and make sure it's sustainable into the future. If that was all the city of Loma Linda, that would be pretty unworkable. However, we've got a lot of folks who are able to kick in to build those supplies so that the list of those supplies meets and exceeds the demands for each agency. So this is the slide you've been waiting for, which is, okay, how do we compare, how much do we have to pay and how much is everybody else paying? Thank you. Third one in, that, that's, that's you. And it's split up between water that is needed to sustain the basin and water that's needed to sort of fill your gap. And if you need a long explanation of what filling your gap means, Jard will give it to you because he was at all those meetings. But my short answer is, it's the difference between the amount you use and your safe yield, the amount you can take out of your savings account each year. That's the simplest explanation. So what that does is that makes everybody whole. In other words, they're not using more than the combination of their safe yield plus, plus the, the cost they're putting in. And then on top of that, we need enough water to make sure the basin stays whole and we get all the water we need during the wet years, so in the dry years, you don't need that. So obviously, the, the, the big player, the big pumper in the basin is the city of San Bernardino, their municipal water department. Redlands has a fairly large stake as well as East Alley. And most of the others are relatively small, including the city of Loma Linda. Others in your area, you know, Loma Linda University has some production, they'll be paying for, for theirs as well. And it took a lot of work to come up with this approach that everybody could agree with, at least from the technical perspective. About a dozen different scenarios and probably at least 10 permutations of each of those. So the technical staff, your technical staff and your city manager, in fact, Jard was one of the few city managers who was in some of those meetings, so I'm not sure he endorses all of it, but at least he was there and was able to give input. I think you were the only one. So what we think we have out of this is something that is both affordable and reasonable, fair, equitable, that's why it's called an equitable allocation, for all the entities. What you buy out of it is not only that you're making sure that you're sustainable and you're making that investment for the future, you're also getting the agreement of everybody else up there who's pumping from the basin, that they're doing the same thing. So there's not somebody getting a free ride on your water. That's important because if everybody does it, it works out together and if it doesn't, you know the, the essential answer, it's the tragedy of the commons, right? Somebody's not watching, somebody takes advantage, then everybody ultimately does. So there's a table, both, yes? You bet.
I have a question. I'm looking at, at the material you provided us. And I'm curious, why is Loma Linda University identified along with water districts and cities when no other organization is?
Yes, Loma Linda University have their own wells and reservoir. So they have their own waters.
Ah, okay.
So an example, right next to Loma Linda University is Southern California Edison?
Oh yeah, you're right.
And so they're there and it will, so these are the larger pumpers in the basin, they're the people who have the largest production. If your production is, there's lots that are very, very small and they'll be accounted for in different ways, they won't be parties to this agreement. The other thing to note before I left this probably appropriately is, the council is intended to, this is not a, a put it together once and forget about it, it's obviously going to need changing over the years as production changes, as maybe weather changes. So you're voting, your authorized voter will be voting in a relationship to the amount you pay. So that means the people who pay more get a bigger vote and the people who pay less get a smaller vote. That's important because you don't want to have folks paying into something that they don't agree with. There's also an 80% vote requirement. So you can imagine how much fun that would be for your city attorney if, if the council had one of those. So a very high threshold of agreement, but doesn't mean that every vote has to be unanimous, but it means you're not going to walk off and, and leave a couple of small guys behind and, and get, and get away with it. So that's the intent of that.
Can you explain the line graph? It says pumping, I think, up in the corner, but I, the print's so small, I'm not sure I'm reading that properly, but I see, I'm trying to understand how the line graph relates to the bar graph.
You are. It, it's actually the production in acre feet on this right-hand side over here. That's the production, that's the gray line. I have very smart engineers who make very complicated graphs. And the other side is the amount of money that you would pay for, for your share of the O and M and state water project purchases.
So if the line graph is above the bar graph, as it is in some cases, they're, they're pumping in excess of their need?
No, what happened is they have their own water source.
Yeah.
Was, that's why, that's why they, they supply more, like for, for example, Redlands, they have other sort of, of water, for example, they have bad water, water.
Surface water, other water supplies.
And that's why it's, they're not paying that, that little portion.
So I mentioned that the forefathers of the people who founded this built water systems and the city of Redlands and others built Big Bear Lake for that, for that purpose, so they have some surface water and some ownership rights in other water companies. So if you're more of a table kind of person, this is the same information essentially. You're the third line down, as you were the third column over, and you have a, a gap there to fill and then you have your, your equitable water costs which roam along through there, across the side, about 218,000 if I'm reading on the right line there. And then there's O and M costs. And currently, today, you pay the San Bernardino Valley Water Conservation District for your share of production for where the really O and M costs, we operate and maintain all of those basins out in, at the, just below Seven Oaks Dam and off in Mentone. This will replace that cost. So one of the things it did is spread that cost amongst people who don't currently pay it today. So that, that share of cost actually goes down and is more equitable. That was a recommendation of the group. And then you have credits for water that you might bring. Certain, certain groups will have credits for water that they bring in excess of what they use and that adds up to the total cost. And then you can see in the very far right there, the voting weight as it shows up. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it. We only spent two years figuring this out and working through it. There's, you have 17 parties in the room, so getting something that works amongst all of those groups and is fair. Every time we got one layer down, we found, you know, sort of like the road thing, fixing it for one made it difficult for the other and you had to come up with these compromises to find a way to get through them, so.
Water companies don't have a voting, right?
Several of those are actually plaintiff entities from Riverside County and during the process, they decided that they, because of the adjudication and their guaranteed water right, couldn't, they can't buy water in this basin, they have to buy it about four times more expensively over in Western Municipal's area. And they decided that they couldn't be signatories to the agreement because it, there's a chance, I'm not sure I understand it, but their lawyer thinks that there's a chance that they could do something that would violate the adjudication that guarantees their water right. So they'll be in the meetings with us, they'll, they'll work with us, just as they always have. They just don't have a share of the water portion. They do have a share of the O and M, which they're required to pay today. So they'll either pay it this way or they'll pay the conservation district's groundwater charge. And either way, they'll pay about the same amount in slightly different form. So there's a number of scheduled meetings, there's, let's see, one was yesterday, our board meets tomorrow, a number of groups, so you're not, not nearly the first, nor, nor are you the last, to consider approval of the, of the agreement. I'd be happy to answer any further questions if you have, it's pretty much all the slides I have.
And so staff recommend that the city council approve this agreement and authorize the city manager to, to sign the agreement. Thank you.
Does the agreement allow for our not being charged if we, if nobody else signs up or if somebody?
The goal is 100% of our agency sign this agreement, approve this agreement.
So it's 80% of the agencies or 80% of the water draw?
Yeah, I, I don't think there will be, there will be any withdrawal procedures for any reason you choose to. I, I think the, the group would have to have some further discussion about how that would go. At the moment, everybody on the staff level's reporting that the discussions they've had with their board are positive. If, if we don't get a strong majority of everybody involved, we're certainly going to come back to all of our councils or boards to discuss how we fix that.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the calendar and we're almost first up and I, you know, we don't want to be the only ones who say yes and then they go, "Oh, well, we'll take your money, the rest of us won't pay."
Yeah, a number of the ones that are later actually have committee meetings of certain times, they go through a number of committees before something goes to either their council or their board. And the committee, not that the committee's recommendation means the board will do it or the council will do it, but so far, all of them have been reporting that, that they're doing well. So I, I don't expect that to be a problem. You know, that said, we may have a holdout somewhere and we may come ask you to sign onto a letter asking that council or that, that board of directors to sign up.
And if it's San Bernardino, we're all in a world of hurt.
I, I actually, the report back from the city of San Bernardino is that they, they have it calendared and their committees have supported it, so hopefully it will, it, it, this is a, this is a big, are you willing to put up your hand and, and say yes, there's, I don't have a, unlike the rest of the state that has the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, whether the state can come make you, we don't, we're adjudicated, we're choosing to do this. So there's no, there's no ugly hammer if you choose not to, it's just the ugly reality of what happens if you don't manage the basin.
Yeah, I, I must have been not paying attention, but can you explain the gap again and why there are four entities with gaps and the rest no gaps?
Yeah, so the gap is measured between the safe yield, so we had to allocate the safe yield based on, on, on usage, which is not as easy as it sounds, but we'll leave that at that. And then compare how much you pumped today against your safe yield.
So it's basically saying that we pump too much?
No, you just pump more than you used to. Safe yield was designed or set in 1969. So what it means is, most of your development came after 69 rather than before 69. That's really what it means.
It's kind of like the same deal we got on the distribution of property tax. We had, we had no services back then, so we only get 11%.
Actually, it's pretty nuanced, it actually uses a combination of what you pumped in, in adjudication period, 59 to 63, and the period of the last five years. So we split that for that exact reason, it wasn't fair that we used only the adjudicated period. So it's actually a 50/50 blend of the adjudication period and your most recent pumping. So we kind of split the baby because there was, it, it made big winners and losers before we did that. So that was one of the more difficult things because it wasn't on science or engineering, it was, it was essentially a policy call to say, you can't have something that's significantly unfair to one or the other, winners and losers, if you will. Not that some didn't argue for that, one way or the other.
So this is a presentation, is there some kind of action that we're going to do?
Right next to it is approve, you need to approve the agreement, so.
Okay. So we need a motion?
So I'll move approval of the proposed agreement.
Okay, I was about to say dies for lack of a second, but I'm sure you're.
I'd stand up here longer and please.
You wouldn't have sat down.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? Is there any opposition? I hear none, so it's approved unanimously. Thank you. And we'll cross our fingers on San Bernardino.
We will report back and get your graphs that you can share.
Next, we have item number three, is Atef Noir here.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the city council for letting me stand here and address my issue. My name is Paul Noir and I'm here for my dad. He is currently out of town for medical reasons and hasn't returned. I tried to reschedule last week, but I was not allowed to move this issue to next month, which is when he would return. I'm not here to only defend a citation that was given to me, but to inform you about more important issues. Let me explain to you why I'm here and standing in front of the city council. I was doing my share of saving water per state and city requests when we were in a drought, which we still are in. I used a ground cover that allowed me to achieve 20% savings in my water bill. My neighbor was not happy with what I was using, so she went ahead and complained to the code enforcement. Code enforcement came and gave me a citation without giving me a chance to fix the issue or discuss what he was not happy with. This is wrong as he should have given me a notice to correct any issue that he is concerned about. He might have given me a notice to correct for previous issues, like a car that I had that was involved in an accident in front of my house and the insurance told me to keep it until further notice. And once I was given that citation, I go ahead and remove the car and corrected any issues. Any notice to correct he gave me, I fixed, which proves I was working with code enforcement for any issue he had with me. I will show you in the following that the code enforcement officer violated city code for citations and in the appeals process. City code number 9.24070, which states that in the event the enforcement officer determines that a violation constitutes a continuing violation, the person responsible for such continuing violation shall be given a reasonable period of time, up to 30 days, to correct violation. The code officer violated this code by not giving me any time to correct this issue and this was the first time he was concerned about this issue. According to code 9.24.120, section C, the person requesting the hearing shall be notified of the time and place set for the hearing at least 10 days prior to the hearing. I only received my notification three days prior. And according to section 9.24.120, part D, a copy of the report should also be served on the person requesting the hearing five days prior to the hearing and I never received a copy of that report. Based on all the code officer violations during the citation process of not giving me a chance to correct the violation and in the appeal process, as I explained in the timeline of appeal, I request for you to dismiss this citation. I want to get your attention into a more important issue. From all the above, uh, excuse me, sorry. From all the above, I requested the code officers to be just a little more friendly and have better customer service for such minute issues that could have been fixed by good communication and good customer service. I tried to talk to the city staff and explain to them that this is for the water conservation, but they weren't willing to understand. This minute issue could have been fixed and resolved without wasting all this effort, the city's time, the city council's time, or my time. The citation will fix the week after I receive the citation. Thank you for your time and understanding, my matter.
Officer Garza will respond to all that.
Evening, mayor, council, staff. My name's Gil Garza, code enforcement officer, city of Loma Linda. And we have history of this property and it was brought to my attention by staff and city council for quite, quite some time, about three or four years. With the inoperable cars, there's an inoperable van that sits on the side of the property that is still considered a fire hazard. I haven't brought it to Mr. Bradfield's attention yet, but our history in our software shows my timeline from April of 2017 until I issued the citation. shows my timeline from April of 2017 until I issued the citation, I gave him notice, final notice, and then the citation. So he had, you know, an applicable amount of time to get into compliance, but he did not get into compliance after the citation was issued. So as far as our timeline shows, and my history shows, in what I've issued was a notice of violation, which I have here, that was dated April 19th, actually 2016, so he had over, about a year and almost three months to get into compliance, and never did, and so finally, with a little bit, I mean, if I wasn't going to issue the citation, I feel that I wouldn't be doing my job, because I was, I was, I was given, I've been sent emails and verbals and meetings with staff and council, that, you know, this property is not in compliance, we need to fix it. So finally, after a year and a half, or a year and three months, I issued the citation, and then he, then he came into compliance. So as of right now, he has not paid the citation, but that is up to you if you want to dismiss it with the appeal.
If I understand you, the property is now in compliance?
The property is now in compliance, yes.
But did not come in in compliance until after the citation was issued?
That is correct, sir.
What was the citation for?
Our one zone landscaping. Yes, I can understand that he was trying to conserve water, but with the photographic evidence that we had over about six months with the notices and final notices, yeah, the weeds were about three to four foot high, dead shrubbery. When the governor did sign the drought bill, that you didn't have to water your property, but you do have to manicure it and keep it clean. You could actually have dirt, gravel in your front yard, but it must be manicured. That was the key word in the citation, was the yard was just not manicured. So the photographic evidence shows the weeds three to four foot high, and then he chopped them down, and then he became in compliance with what he has done.
If I recall, there were some disputes about whether notice put in the mailbox was adequate? Is that, was that part of the?
We send a, our notice, first notice starts out with a regular mail, and I also drop one off to the resident. I knock on the door, if they answer, then I hand it to them. The second notice is a final notice of violation, that is a certified letter that is sent out so that we have record that it was signed for, and they received the final notice. And the same thing with the citation, it is handed to the resident, I literally take it to the door, and we also certify one, and it's signed, so that we know that the resident has received it.
And that met the timelines?
That is a timeline, I was pretty lenient, I had a lot of conversations with Mr. Noir, and I, you know, I said, I don't want to start a case, but if you could just chop these weeds down, that'd be great, you know, but unfortunately, after a year and three months, you know, with council giving me emails and telling me, hey, this property needs to be in compliance, staff was also telling me that the property needs to be in compliance, so I just went around, the proper route was notice, final notice, and then violation.
How much time went from the final notice to the point where you actually issued a citation?
I believe it was April, and I issued the citation in June of last year.
Okay, and then you actually, so you then, a year, basically, nine months later, you actually issued a citation?
The notice was April 19th, and then the citation was issued June 5th.
Okay.
But when was the first notice that there was something wrong?
Also, way back in 2014, 2015, with history, the notice given to him. That was about the landscaping, that was about the inoperable vehicles.
Okay, because this is just about the landscaping, we're addressing-
The citation was only for landscaping.
Okay, and what is the cost of the citation?
The first violation is $100, with a $22 processing fee, and a $6.48 recovery of the certified mail, so $128.48.
And that's how much he owes right now?
Correct.
Was there, sorry, I don't know if this is on, was there some other history with getting this, this hearing date? Because the citation was issued in June of last year.
Correct, he did, he did go through the proper channels, and he did get a hearing with our hearing officer. That was postponed also one time, and then rescheduled, and then he finally had a meeting with the hearing officer, he was denied-
Who postponed those?
The owner or the resident of the house.
Okay, so from hearing a little bit about this, this, he has asked that this be postponed several times?
This is only the first time for city council, he had postponed a hearing, a hearing officer at city hall, and then, then he asked, he didn't like his answer, so then he requested a hearing with city council.
The natural appeal process is to come to city council.
Correct.
But there was also a request, or we postponed this one?
Correct.
And then there was a request to cancel this one again tonight, and postpone it again for another month, correct?
That is correct.
He mentioned that he wasn't notified about this hearing until five days ago, was there some proof of to when we notified him about this hearing?
Yes, yes.
And how did we notify him of the hearing?
Certified mail.
Actually, he selected this hearing date back in November?
I believe November, December, and he requested for February.
But then you notified him at some point that it's coming up in February?
Yes, yes, when, I believe, city clerk or secretary-
Send him a certified?
Sends them, you know, once the agenda is put together, then they certify mail them.
Okay, the agenda's not put together more than 10 days in advance, so was that given?
He was, he was sent a copy of the agenda, he was sent a copy of the, the appeal notice, which he delayed, he was sent a copy of the appeal result, which he then, his hearing, which he then appeals to city council. We set a couple of hearing dates, which he asked us to move because he's out of the country, and I believe it was November, he specifically asked for this date, and then everything was published, noticed, he would have been mailed a copy of the packet on Friday, however, his noticing goes back to November for this appeal, he's asking for the delays, not us. So he is months into noticing, not days.
My question is, there is documentation that shows that both the city staff and the gentleman agree that this day on February 13th would be the date that you can appeal in front of the council?
That is correct.
Okay.
When was the house brought into compliance, and has it been maintained and manicured, to use the word you used? Has it been manicured since it was originally brought into compliance?
Brought into compliance in October 2017.
And it's been maintained since then?
Yes, sir. They have somewhat of a gravel landscape with artificial turf now.
So the citation was issued in June, and it was brought into compliance in October?
Correct.
And he's appealing the citation in February?
That was issued in June, and he started the appeal process wanting to hear the hearing officer after the citation was given. Property came into compliance after that in October, and then he, that he still wanted the city council hearing.
I guess what I'm confused about is that my impression was that the city didn't follow the time schedule of the ordinance properly, and that was the basis of appeal, am I correct, Mr. Noir? So we have a disagreement on the facts. We're beginning to sound like Washington DC now.
The mayor is not orange.
Well, my timeline and with, with our notices, history in our software shows that every day that we've sent up a notice with a citation, and a signature with, that he received the citation, with certified mail receipt.
I'm curious as to why this item didn't have a more detailed explanation as to the timeline. Just on this item, all we have in our record is his letter of appeal, but no other documentation or information about the timeline that he just presented, I'm just curious as to why there wasn't some server report with more information on that.
Sounds to me like there was just a decision to do a verbal, right?
Yeah, but all his, all his documentation is a request for an appeal. The details of his appeal, we were not privileged to until this evening.
Yeah, but it would have been nice-
His reason for the appeal.
Well, but it would have been nice for me to get a better sense of the timeline from the city's perspective, since everybody seems to have known for months that we're going to do this on the 13th.
All we knew is he had an appeal, we didn't know what, if he's appealing the weeds, the lawn, the car, the timeline, he has presented the purpose for his appeal this evening on a first pass.
But it seemed like he was appealing the citation for the land, for the, his front yard, because that's what we cited him for. But anyway, I, I'm just, general statement, it would have been helpful for me to have seen some documentation, other than us asking questions, as a result of the fact that we don't have any data in front of us.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
Well, I'll say that in light of the fact, I mean, we've had these discussions, we had a lengthy discussion, I don't know, a couple of months ago, with pictures and everything, not on this specific residence necessarily, but we had a whole variety of residences in, in our city that interpreted the water conservation policy or law as they could just let their lawn go and let the weeds take over. And the city council, as I recall, reacted to that and said, you know, we need to maintain a, the dignity and beauty of our, of our neighborhoods, and urged the city to use the codes and enforce them in an appropriate way, and by the facts of this presentation, these presentations, it sounds to me like that's exactly what the city has attempted to do. And, you know, on the one hand, $100 isn't a huge deal, but, you know, for some people, $100 is a big deal. But I feel like we need to support the codes that we have, so that people know that the city is eager to work with them, but at the same time, expect appropriate compliance. And so for those reasons, I would move that we enforce the citation that's been issued.
Deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal, thank you.
Just another question of clarification, did we cite him, not as a citation, but warrant, make aware the fact that the car was an issue?
The car was three or four years ago.
Okay.
And he did come into compliance with the car, he parked it on the side of his, of his home. But it's still somewhat, I haven't really enforced the inoperable vehicle in the driveway-
So the car's still there, but it just moved?
It's still there, it just moved out of sight on the side of the house.
Okay.
If you do recall, sir, I gave a PowerPoint at the beginning of last summer, because council wanted to know a little bit better about landscaping, and the governor's bill and everything, and those, this property was one of the pictures that I did put in the PowerPoint, because the weeds were about three to four foot high at the time.
Yeah, I can't see it. Yeah, does the, does the-
So there's, there's a motion to deny the appeal, is there?
I'll second it.
Okay, so there's a second, any further discussion? Okay, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
I just want to make it clear as to why I'm opposing it. I think the goal of the whole process is to get people to actually follow the rules. It would have been helpful for me, before I made a decision, to see the before and after, because ultimately, it was a citation that seems to have finally gotten his attention to actually fix it. So in, in a sense, that actually helped, this whole citation process. I understand that we're going through this whole process now, trying to do away with that, so to speak. I'm, if we can get residents to fix their yards, that's great, and I think in this case, it worked. Yes, it was a very lengthy process, but what it would have helped me to make a better decision is if I wanted to see a before and after, I want to see what that house looks like now, and it would have been better for me to understand that, yes, he fixed it back in October, but yet, here we are in February, I want to know what it looks like now, before I made a decision. So that's part, the basis for why I would not support this appeal.
So I'll make a couple of comments also. Unfortunately, what we have here, it's not, it's not just a resident taking two, three years to come into compliance, it's the staff time that's involved, so it is costing, in my opinion, and I absolutely understand your point about having some of that stuff in front of us, although we did get a pretty significant packet last summer, that had beautiful color pictures that we displayed up here, and that property was specifically talked about as one of our problem properties in the, in the city, so it's pretty clear to all of us, it's pretty clear to me, and I don't really believe that that owner is really trying to come into compliance, I really think we're playing games here. And the problem is, we're playing games with staff time, which is costing all of us as residents and taxpayers, so I appreciate your work, sir, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So the motion passed four to one, so the appeal is denied. My, just my final comment would be that I think it's probably not wise to wait for the city to let you know that you have to mow your weeds. My belief is that that's something that's, that's a point of pride in a neighborhood, and I think it's, I think it's kind of sad that it comes to having to get a notice from the city to do that, so, yeah, if you could pass that message along, you know, a little bit of pride in the property, and I understand it's much better now, and thank you for that, we're happy with that, but in the past, it was, it's just kind of, to me, it's odd that someone would need the city to tell them to mow their, their property, so that's why I voted the way I did. So thank you. Next, we'll move to item number four, public hearing, council bill R-2018-05, weed abatement.
Good evening, mayor and council, and city staff and residents, it's that time of year again for the, the weed abatement. The background is from the International Fire Code 2015 edition that the city of Loma Linda adopted in the municipal code. It allows us to abate any weeds, litter, flammable waste, grass, or other vegetation that could be ignited, endangering property, and that it should be cut down and removed by the owner or occupant of the premises. The vegetation clearance requirements of the wildland interface areas also should be in accordance with chapter 49 of the fire code. So in the analysis, the fall 2017 weed abatement program began on September 5th, 2017, with an initial inspection of 435 parcels. Pursuant to section 104.5 of the International Fire Code, 233 notices to clean property, and that's exhibit A in your packet there, were sent to, by regular mail, and on September, on September 14th, to the owners of record, as provided by the county assessor's office. Follow-up inspections began on October 3rd. If the abatement had not been accomplished, or if arrangements for a time extension had not been made to this office, the parcels were placed on a weed abatement list and given to the city contractor for initiation of abatement work. Combustible vegetation, fire hazards, were abated by the city contractor on 17 parcels. On January 8th, 2018, it'd be exhibit B, the invoices specifying the cost of the work performed by the contractor, plus any city administrative fees were mailed to the owner of record for each parcel, giving them an- of record for each parcel, giving them an opportunity to make a payment of the bill by February 13th, today's date. Parcels abated on the city, by the city contractor, which remain unpaid, are listed on exhibit C, and there are a couple of exceptions that have come in since we, Phil, made these packets. So those, which remain unpaid on the, upon completion of the documentation of the abatement work and payment were made, but to the contractor, to the city. Owners have an opportunity to appear at the hearing, to ask questions, dispute the bills and proceedings. Subsequent to the February 13th hearing, actions of the city council, the report of the costs with accompanying resolutions will be forwarded to the property tax division of the San Bernardino County Auditor, Controller, Recorder, for collection of assessments and liens against the property. So it's our recommendation that the city council receives a report for the fall 2017 weed abatement program, approve the report and accounting costs, and adopt the accompanying resolution establishing the liens and assessments on these properties. If you have any questions.
My recollection is, in reviewing these in past years, the owner of record has been part of the report that we receive, and this year, I see it's only parcel numbers. Is there a reason that, that, am I correct in that, first of all, and is there a reason it was changed?
Well, it was changed, it was more of a privacy thing, that my inspector and stuff did. In the future, we can put the names back on.
The only benefit for me was that, that if I saw the same name show up, then it told me these were people that had kind of hired the city to do their, their weed abatement.
Correct.
Parcel numbers, I don't remember. Names, I'm not too bad with, but I can't, I don't know that it's that opinion, that important. But I, I did note in the past, that we tended to see the same name, same property, that would appear from year to year. So my question is, is that still the case? Are, are these pretty much the same properties we do weed abatement on every year, and then go back to collect for?
Yes, that, that is true, there's, I can give you a couple of examples. I will tell you that, I'm on that list, item number twelve, the property owner did come in and pay that today, just a little bit before the end of work.
Okay. Number fourteen jumps out at me.
Yeah, I know, fourteen and number eight, they're two separate parcel numbers, but they belong to the same property owner. So the, number fourteen is actually a parcel that was abated back in the spring of 2017. And this is when Jim Shea was still the inspector, and there was a, some difficulties getting the property owner to, to pay up. Jim finally made a verbal contractual agreement with him, that, that he would not put it on last weed abatement's list, if the guy would make thousand-dollar payments on a monthly basis to make it paid off. The gentleman made one payment. So I did have a conversation with him this evening, and learning our lesson about verbal agreements, we have made a deal with the council, it's okay, that we'll make a con, written contract, that he will make five hundred dollar payments per month, until it's paid off. And this will be a written contract, and if it's not paid off at the end of the timeframe that would equal to it, then we will lien his property. Now, the, item number eight, which is also his parcel, he has some question on whether or not our weed contractor actually abated the proper property. So Tom and I are going to go out and investigate it, so we'd like to pull that one from the list for now, and make sure that we are, that our contractor was accurate on his, you know, finding the parcel and abating it.
Can you explain the variable administrative fees?
The administrative fees are based on seventy percent of what the cost to abate the property is. Now, if you notice on the last one, item fourteen, that's zero, and part of Jim's deal to help the guy with the cost, his, his bill was going to be over ten thousand dollars, from the, from the spring 2017, with the city administrative fee. So Jim has, has the permission to waive that fee, and just do the actual cost of the abatement. So the abatement was actually sixty-one, sixty-one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, after he made the one thousand dollar payment. After he talked to Jim in August of 2017, Jim thought we had a ongoing agreement going on, but it made the one payment, and that was it. So it would be up, it would be up to you whether or not we, on that particular parcel, if you're, if you're okay with us making a, written, a written contract with him, maybe with the assistance of the city attorney, then we can abate. The, all we're wanting to do is get the cost of the, that the city has incurred.
Sure, it relates to the same code we were talking about, a little, one of the previous items.
That's correct.
We're looking for, you know, an attractive city that we're all proud of.
Right.
When you've got weeds going crazy, it is also, not only is a fire hazard, it looks bad too, so it's all part and parcel for the same objective. We're not trying to make money on this, so whatever you have to work out.
And the amount that is owed there is, is just what our, for that particular parcel, what we paid the contractor to, to clean it.
It's the, the thing with that, it, we just have to be careful, because, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and, and I have a hard time justifying it for the person with the biggest bill, but people with smaller bills have to pay fees. So we've got to be careful with being fair, but, do what you need to do. I will move the report.
We have to have a public hearing first.
Oh, okay.
I'll open the public hearing with the ceremonial tap of the hammer. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Seeing no motion, I will close the public hearing, and now, your motions and seconds are operative. So is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing not, it's approved unanimously. You have your instructions, including latitude to work out whatever deals you can get to collect the money.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our public hearing, item number five, community development block grant, Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item for fiscal year 2018, nineteen, this year, the county received four requests for a CDBG grant, of which, which three of them are for public services, activities. And, and these three are the same that we, we award them every year. One is the county library, the second one is inland temporary home, and the third one is family service association, do business as FSA. This is the company that provide luncheon for our senior center. So, staff recommend that the, the city council approve to award ten thousand dollars each to this public service activity for next fiscal year. And as far as the city project go, the money will go to, toward payment rehabilitation at Star Street, from Anderson to the east end, Richardson Street, from Star Street to Barton Road, and Hillcrest Street, from Prospect to Barton Road, which is, the remaining is about fifty-nine, I mean, ninety-five thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. We have representative here from, from the three agencies, so.
Is it, is this informational only, or do we need to move it?
You have to move it too, yes.
I'll move it.
Well, second, we have requests for public comment, plus we have a public hearing, so I guess I'll open the public hearing, and we'll take the comments in the setting of the public hearing. So the public hearing is open, and we'll start with Ahlem Jidala.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alom, and I work with the Family Service Association. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about our senior nutrition program. So we've been providing this program for seniors ages sixty-two and older, in the county of San Bernardino, and in the city of Loma Linda, for a few years now, I'm actually not sure how long, but I know it's been quite some time. We provide both congregate and home-delivered meals for the seniors. The congregate meals are served at the City of Loma Linda Senior Center, and the home-delivered meals are for seniors who are either disabled or lack transportation. So this has really been a valued service for the seniors in the city of Loma Linda. Just to go into some numbers, during the 2016, 2017 fiscal year, our program was able to serve two hundred and twelve unduplicated City of Loma Linda seniors, and they were served with over five thousand, six hundred meals. So typically, the seniors that do come to the senior center, they do usually eat there twice or three times a week, so they are able to come back for more meals. And just wanted to mention that your support for this program is really appreciated. Unfortunately, due to an increase in demand, which is a good thing, but also a shortage in funding, we've recently had to implement wait lists throughout San Bernardino County. So we currently have about two hundred and seventy seniors on a wait list for services. Fortunately, in the city of Loma Linda, that number is only at three seniors right now on the wait list, so we really do appreciate any funding that we can get from the city of Loma Linda, because we really know that this is a valued service that the seniors really enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a quick question. How do you get, say, our, our engine crews or our deputies are in the field and seeing need, how do they get a senior connected with your service?
That's a really good question.
Come to the senior center.
Jeff, you're not that old.
No.
That's a really good question, yeah, they could definitely either call the senior center, they can either call Adult Protective Services, or 211 San Bernardino County, and then they'll link them to our agency, where they can go and then provide their information, and then they can get linked for the services. And I didn't mention this, but I do really recommend that if you haven't seen the program at the senior center, you go and check it out. I write the grants for our agency, so I did help with this grant, and actually seeing it was a really beautiful program, to see the community together at the senior center, so I do really recommend that. Thank you.
I know some days I come, and the blot is full out here, and I know the senior center's in business.
Okay, the next request for speaking is Jeff Little.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city staff. Thank you for letting me speak here, I'm Jeff Little, and I'm the CEO of Inland Temporary Homes, doing business as Inland Housing Solutions. You'll be hearing Inland Housing Solutions a little bit more moving forward, we're doing a little rebranding, so, you know, just wanted to plant the, the name, so you hear it and you'll remember it. We've obviously been providing housing, case management services, mental health services, and some employment connect in the city of Loma Linda for over twenty-seven years now. I will share some numbers here, we really appreciate all of the support over the years. I like to give our numbers in, in usually three to four-year increments, because it shows success longer term, than just say, we house, you know, X number of households. But over the last three years, we've housed ninety-six families, we obviously, our focus is families with children, and it's a self-sufficiency program, so we're really focused on income, and, you know, our assistance is, is medium, short to medium term. Ninety-six families, that's consistent of a hundred and seventeen adults and two hundred and eleven children, so that's two hundred and eleven children we've taken off the street. Out of those, ninety-six families, eighty-two of them have graduated or ended rental assistance, and seventy-seven are still with favorable outcomes, three-year average. So that is ninety-four percent three-year success rate. Average length of, of assistance is rough, is two hundred and thirty-five days, which is roughly eight months. And, yeah, we feel like we do a really good job, and we really appreciate the support and the recommendation. And I have a quick, just one little quick blurb from, this was an unsolicited email from one of our households just a couple of months ago, to Carmen, who's our client service coordinator. She just said, "Just to let you know, we are so thankful for everything you have done for us. We appreciate how much ITH has really transformed our lives for the better. I owe you my life, because I was truly down and out, and thought this pain would never end. Carmen, I do not tell you enough, I do not tell you thank you enough. I ask myself, what did I do to deserve this prayer to be answered? If there's anything I can do for you and this organization, let me know. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Love, Patricia." Thank you.
Where are you currently? I know when you used to be located down on Redlands Boulevard, where are you located?
We are off of Mission Road, so the gentleman that was speaking earlier about the real curb, I know all about the real curb. We're on Mission, just across the street from the KB Homes, between California and Mountain View. Kind of kitty-corner to the, to the Starbucks there, with the new development, yeah. So we're in the old, I think it's the old Hinkley Mansion, right? You know, we've been, we've been keeping it safe for, for all these years, nobody's been breaking into it, and so.
Do you spend time there, do you work there?
That's, yeah, that's the, that's the office. We don't house, oh, I'm sorry.
Out of curiosity, because we had a previous workshop on this, we've been here for a while now. What do you think of the traffic going up and down Mission Road?
It ebbs and, it ebbs and flows, sometimes it's really quiet, and then other times, you know, early in the morning, or, you know, people getting off work, it can, it can crank up a little bit. Pulling out of our driveway, depending on whether the trees have been trimmed back, or, you know, it, it can get a little dangerous, but they've been doing a really good job. The trees that were planted there, they grow so fast. Whoever's on the schedule are doing a fantastic job, because it gets trimmed pretty regularly, they do, they do a good job. I do remember the multiple stop signs, I know they've been taken out. Most people do pretty well, sometimes we have a police officer that sits at the stop, stoplight, and so, you know, I always, I'm always telling staff and interns, you know, make sure you, you know, I actually used to live, live in that neighborhood back in the day, so I said, you know, there's families out here, make sure you're driving the speed limit and being safe, and nobody wants any tickets, so, it's, it's not bad, it's not bad. I know the new developments, I've seen kind of the plans, I know they're going to try to route traffic a, a different way, I believe, right? So, not to get into that, but it's, it hasn't been bad, I wouldn't say. Pulling out, now the worst is California, right? Pulling out of Mission onto California, going left or right, you know, there's some accidents and things, but I could, I can pull out of that thing in my sleep, I've driven it so many times, probably. Not that I would do that, of course.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Latoya Courtney for the library. So you're the new Stan Sewell.
I am, and thank you for having me. Good evening, mayor and city council members and staff. My name is Latoya Courtney, and I stood before you last year with manager Stan Sewell, who has moved on to a different branch and is doing well. He was honored for his number of years of service, and he's doing well now. So first off, introducing myself as the manager for Loma Linda. I'm right next door here, right in the same vicinity here, from our civic center, and I do appreciate the opportunity, being able to stand here before you, to talk about our adult literacy program, and what we do at the branch. So thank you for your ongoing support, and continuing to help us maintain literacy assistance. So our goal for our literacy program is to assist our English-speaking adults to read and write at a level that'll help them succeed and accomplish their goals. So the Loma Linda Branch Library is very unique, and it's serving our community directly, because we offer these distinct services, free of charge, with our tutors at no cost. So we do this, all are circulating over seventeen thousand items, and also providing these services for young adults and for children. Our basic literacy... Our basic literacy skills play a major role for adults, being able to function day-to-day at work and at home and at play. And our community really thrives when those living in it are able to learn and sustain with these literacy skills. So we offer individualized tutoring, and it helps our adults and gives them the opportunity to meet regular with our adult volunteers. We offer job seeker courses within our library's database, and that offers resources to the community to improve with resume help and interviewing skills. We also offer our basic computer class and basic internet courses, and that allows our participants to meet with the instructor on a one-on-one tutoring session to practice their basic computing skills. So our course currently runs every six weeks, and it's held Tuesdays at 1:00 p.m. So for this fiscal year, our adult literacy program has already exceeded our annual goal of 40 participants, so we're very proud of that. So we have an opportunity to reach even further and help even more of our learners. So with the continued support from the city of Loma Linda, we look forward for you guys helping us with reaching many more adults, to reach their full potential. And we thank you for this opportunity to being able to present tonight and for your continued support with our literacy program. And I would be happy to answer any questions about our program if need be. And I want to thank, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you for the services you provide our community. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and ask the council for their direction.
I'll move it.
The staff recommendation has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Thank you. Next is item number six, Public Hearing Council, R-2018-06, approving an annexation.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is the new subdivision at the southeast and southwest corner of New Jersey and Citrus Avenue. So they request that the city council approve, adopt the Council Bill Number R-2008-06 for the Landscape Maintenance District. And then Barbara has the envelopes.
Does this one have an inflationary adjustment attached? Are they part of the Landscape Maintenance District that has an inflationary adjustment attached?
Yes, yes, sir. Or a new one do. Yes.
We won't make that mistake again.
Correct.
Okay, so we...
So right now, luckily, it's only one owner, which is KB Homes.
Do you want to have the election or should we have the public hearing first?
It's over by the park, is that right?
The one that, the orange groves are gone, the Orange Streets are gone, yes.
The orange grove.
Yes.
So they haven't sold any of their properties yet?
No, they haven't built it yet.
Good. So they haven't, they're not subdividing the properties?
No, it's one owner right now, so...
Okay.
Do we need to have the public hearing first?
It probably doesn't matter, but I would go ahead and open the public hearing and then Barbara can open the...
Okay, the public hearing is slapped into order. Does anyone want to speak on this Landscape Maintenance District?
It's both. It's the same track, right? Good evening.
Good evening.
Honorable Mayor and council and staff, my name is Ed Bondaman. I work for Engineering Company in San Bernardino. My client is Laura Ramirez. She owns the property to the west of Track 19963. I think it's items six, seven, and then you've got an item 16 on your consent calendar. I think these are all that track, right? So the only reason I'm here is KB Homes came to our client. They asked for some assistance on the location of irrigation lines and other items that they wanted from our client. So we worked with them, Ron Fisher, and their engineer is Angel at Michael Baker International. So the problem that we have with this project, and we don't really want the council to move forward on it yet, is there's a few things that they, or, what's the word? Haven't been finished yet or haven't been decided yet. The big one is, it's really the drainage on Orange Street. So our concern is that when KB Homes goes in, they're actually putting a curb and gutter on the north side of the street. All the drainage comes down New Jersey, turns down Orange, there's a big dip in the road, and it goes across the Orange Grove. So we've been trying to work with their engineer, Michael Baker International. They've sort of ignored us, they've actually ignored us. We've talked to the city. The city has given us some feedback. But we're concerned that these KBs are just going to keep getting approvals. Our issue isn't going to be addressed. They're going to build the curb and flood out to her house. So I'm here asking you to not approve these items until we get a little bit of, you know, comment back from them identifying the drainage problem on Orange. Because what they're doing is concentrating the drainage, and they're going to flood out her house. And that's, and we just, we haven't seen anything. We've asked for hydrology studies, we've asked for data from their engineer. They've given us a little bit of stuff, but nothing that addresses the whole overall problem.
I have some questions from staff. Has that project already been approved for grading?
They have approved the rough grading, yes.
So when they got approval from us for the grading, I'm just curious, because that's, the cart has left the barn at that point. I'm just curious, why is it that you didn't come bring that issue in front of us at that point?
It hasn't. Actually, rough grading's fine. What is it, the street improvements? So you have your, next thing they're going to go after is their encroachment permit. So what they really, I think, needs to happen, from what it looks like, I haven't done the study, but they haven't shared their study with us to show otherwise, is that I think the storm drain needs to be extended from California Street and Catch Basin, put in the bait, put in the low spot of Orange. That's what I think needs to happen. If they don't do it, it'll all be concentrated, and all the water that was just flowing across the Orange Groves is going to be intercepted and put right down her driveway into a house that sits lower than the street. So that's why I'm here.
I understand, but we approved the track map for this project some time ago.
No, the track map is on the agenda tonight.
Right.
Okay, so within that track map, should there not be data indicating what their solution is for drainage?
No.
So you're telling me that what we're in front of us doesn't, not only does it not address that, but doesn't even correct it?
So what happens tonight is typically you'll do all your improvement plans, water, street, sewer, storm drain, prior to doing your final map. What they did is they bonded around it. They're close enough that they're, you're happy enough that you can at least approve the final map. Well, we don't want them to even do that. I'd rather you not do any of these things until this item is taken care of, at least addressed appropriately, so that, you know, this, you know, developer doesn't push all of this water onto this other piece of property. That's...
My question is, when, where's the leverage point to get them to do that? Is this the leverage point?
No.
Or is this inappropriate?
The item before you at this moment, the public hearing item, has only to do with the Landscape Assessment District and the annexation.
So it's item 16 is where we...
Item 16, which we have not come to yet, is a final map, which is a ministerial action. That only has to do with the subdivision. It does not give him final approval to build the project, the homes. Those are still before the Planning Commission, and that's the proper forum where these concerns could be addressed with conditions of approval for the project that is still pending there.
That would make sense to me.
Yes.
So what he's asking for is to use this as a, my understanding is that when we put in a Landscape Maintenance District, that's something we want.
Correct.
So it's not something they're begging for. We want them to actually, you know, pay up and fix it.
Yes, those are conditions of approval that benefit the city. We would not want to forego those or delay those because that's not in the city's interest.
So there's plenty of time to take care of his concerns in another forum.
Yes.
And then we have an applicant over here that, let's wait till item 16.
That's fine. I noticed these two, so I wanted to bring it up before, so I get at least as many carrots, you know, as possible. So I can wait till item 16 if you'd prefer.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's get care of Landscape Assessment District and Street Light Assessment District again, and then KB Homes.
Then, fine. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the Landscape Maintenance District issue? Okay, no takers, then I'll close the public hearing on that. And what's the pleasure of the council?
So just for clarification, I want to be sure I understand. If we voted approval of item six, the annexation, it's a separate item that doesn't really come to bear on the issue that the gentleman just raised.
Yes, sir.
And what this is, is so we want to make sure that the, first of all, the homeowner association or have to maintain the, or the city, in this case it would be the city, as part of Landscape Assessment District, to maintain the landscaping around the perimeter.
Yeah, yeah.
What I understand is, why would this be in front of us when the project itself hasn't even been placed in front of us?
Because right now, it's only one owner, which is KB Homes. If you subdivide it and it's not selling it, then we're going to have 90 that we have to go in for them to vote on.
So this would be applied no matter who's in there or how many homes they put in?
Right. So now that the owner approved, one owner approved, and then when they sell it, then the condition of the...
Okay.
And we're not terribly interested in their voting no, which they're inclined to do if they have individual property owners.
So this is more related to the whole area, not specifically to this project, or what exactly is going to be built there? Just in general, whatever's gonna, how many homes are going to be there, we're going to be assessing landscape district area to ensure that we get enough gener...
Within this tract, yes.
Okay.
I'll move the item, except that I found a couple of things in both resolutions, and that is that they, we have the prior city clerk listed in the document, so we need to change that, so...
Well, Pam says she has somebody outside.
If she does, we're all in trouble.
She's an A.
So, not a big deal, but anyway, I'll move it and check with the attorney. That shouldn't preclude us moving this particular...
Okay, so there's a motion to approve Council Bill R-2018-06, as recommended in the staff report, and there's a second.
I'll repeat my motion for 07 also.
Can we, we haven't even heard the presentation on that, so we'll, we'll save your motion for later. You tried.
They're connected.
You tried.
Inefficient.
We have to have a public hearing as well, so...
Hit the gavel.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. And now item seven, Council Bill R-2018-07.
Wow.
That's okay. We have the ballots for it. There are actually three for the Landscape Maintenance from KB Homes for the property designated as Assessor Parcel Number 0292-163-08. Votes in favor of the assessment. The Assessor Parcel Number 0292-161-02, KB Homes votes in favor of the assessment. And for the parcel known as parcel number 0292-15161, excuse me, 03, KB Homes votes in favor of the assessment.
Yeah, they'd better because we just annexed them. We probably did it out of order, but...
Well, for the record, yes, the vote was based upon the ballots, and so we'll incorporate that.
Yes.
Okay, so item seven.
Yes, sir. This is similar to the previous item, but it's for the last, I mean, Street Light Assessment District.
Okay, so any questions? Let's open the public hearing. Come forward and speak. No takers, we'll close the public hearing. We had comments from the prior speaker on this item already, and now let's get the vote, this time before, before our motion.
And for the property known as Assessor Parcel Number 0292-16102, KB Homes votes in favor of the assessment. For the parcel known as parcel number 0292-161-03, KB Homes votes in favor of the assessment. And for the property known as parcel number 0292-163-08, KB Homes votes in favor of the assessment.
Okay, we have the support of the landowners. Now let's go with the council.
I'll move it again.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. And next is our consent calendar.
I'd like to pull number 16, so it's renewed, we're going to talk about it anyway.
Okay, then let's talk about number 16 first.
Yes, sir. This is to approve the Council Bill Number R-2008-1810 for the final track map number 19963 at the southwest corner of New Jersey Street and Citrus Avenue, and it's KB Homes. So Mr. Ed Bondaman, our voice concern, his concern, and I would like to have KB Homes, Mr. Ron Fisher respond to, Mr. Bondaman comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor Riggsby, and council members, for an opportunity to address council. Certainly, Mr. Bondaman had some concerns. And my civil engineer and I, Michael Baker International, met with Mr. Bondaman, I believe it was back in October, to find out what his concerns were. And his concerns were stormwater. As we began to discuss it, I realized the condition he was describing was a pre-existing condition that existed long before KB Homes ever showed up. As a goodwill, we went ahead and I instructed my engineer to take a look at it and see what he could do to capture the water on our side of the street, which he did. He did his calculations, he did his engineering calculations, and he come up with a plan to put three parkway drains in the curb and direct those into a bioretention basin in the public roadway just beyond the sidewalk. His calculation showed that we could capture all of the water coming down our side of the street, heading towards California Street. Unfortunately, Mr. Bondaman wasn't satisfied with that. He wants something more. But the something more he wants is for us to capture the stormwater on the opposite side of the street, which is not within our area. So I told him he needed to bring that to staff. And that's where we are right now today. We're moving forward with the project. That's the reason I'm here tonight, to get the final map, so we can pull up permits and start our underground work. We've just about completed our mass rough grading, and we're ready to move. We've got a multi-million dollar project that we need to move forward on. We plan to open models early July, and any delay at this point would be devastating to both the schedule and the budget for this particular project. I'd be glad to work with staff if they have any ideas what we can do to help capture the water on the other side of the street, but it's really not within our area of responsibility to capture that water. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Now, Mr. Bondaman stated that the water comes down Nevada and turns left on Orange, and then...
and then flows into the properties we're talking about. So if it's coming down Nevada, that's not from your property, that's from properties to the south.
Yeah, he's speaking of properties coming down New Jersey, actually.
New Jersey, okay.
Coming down south. That's not on our property.
Yeah. So, yeah. So it sounds like there's an issue, but it's not necessarily yours, but-
It's an issue- it's a problem we're not creating. We're capturing our water. And all of our calculations that Michael Baker International did shows that we are capturing all of our water. Actually, we're capturing enough water to catch water coming further from the east.
Okay, Mr. Bonneman seems to be raring for a rebuttal, so.
I'll give him the mic.
Mr. Mayor, while he's coming forward, I would comment that the approval of a final track map is a ministerial action, and this council is required to approve it if staff has been satisfied that the procedures and requirements of the tentative have been complied with. It's not an opportunity to impose new or different conditions of approval for the project.
And that's well noted, but we'll listen to the rebuttal anyway.
Yeah, agreed, completely. We're actually not even asking him to have any additional conditions, but they need to take care of the water that hits them. What he's talking about is, he's completely ignoring all the off-site tributary drainage that will hit that curb, be concentrated, and taken west. Period. His engineer only is looking at their side of the street. He has absolutely no data going up the street. He has nothing. So he can't say, well, we're- you know, Bonneman's not satisfied with that. I'm totally satisfied. He wants to put those in, but he's not addressing the drainage problem. And as his engineer and as developer, if they create a problem, and they're not addressing it, and they know all they have to do is do a standard drainage study with off-site tributary drain, it's standard. Every project does it. Every project we have done has does it. They haven't done it. And if they have done it, they haven't shown it to us to let us look at the cues, the amount of water that hits it. So we're concerned that you're gonna end up- this is your city, you're gonna end up with a big problem there, and you're gonna end up with drainage that's gonna be concentrated on someone else, and we have come over and over and addressed this with them, with their engineer, with city staff, that there's a problem. And if no one addresses the problem, then it becomes the city's problem. If I was you, I would make it his problem, because it is his problem as the developer to deal with his drainage. Period.
Let me ask a question. Are you saying that there's water from off-site that historically has flowed across this undeveloped property?
Correct.
And spread out enough that it never pooled in the low spot?
Correct.
And now, because they've walled off with curbs, their property, the water that used to come from farther south, that used to spread over their property-
Correct.
And not be a problem on Orange Street, is now funneled down New Jersey, turning a left on Orange and puddling. Is that the issue?
Correct. Pretty close.
Okay.
It- yes.
So Mike, before you do your sir rebuttal, what's your comment?
So what Laura and Ed like to see is, is we install a storm drain system, and, you know, to bring it up California Street all the way, and turn east on Orange Avenue to pick up those runoff.
Maybe. That's maybe. I don't even know, because they haven't shared enough data with us to say how much water is going to be in the street there, and if it even has the capacity for that water. I think, just from looking at it in the square footage in the area, I think it's probably should be- that would be one fix, is a storm drain. Other fixes could be to run curb all the way to California. There's other ways to do it, but this track deserves some off-site improvements, and you're not- you don't have any here. It really needs some off-site improvements to deal with the stormwater. And their engineer should have picked it up, and he should have already designed a storm drain and catch basin if it needs it. But again, I haven't seen- they haven't shared enough for us to make a decision.
I have a question.
But we've been very helpful with them.
Okay, sir rebuttal.
Question for the city attorney first. So if this condition exists, is there liability on the city, or the liability on KB when he decides to sue down the road?
Yes. Everybody could be sued for everything.
Not to repeat myself, but it's not a matter that we can resolve this evening in the context of this agenda item. But that's something- if there's something that needs to be addressed as to this particular subdivision, there's still an opportunity to review that in the context of the matter that's still pending before the planning commission.
Before you move on, but I'm looking at the staff report, and it talks about how approving this allows them to move ahead with, and he indicated, underground utilities. So that, to me, seems like this is the appropriate time to address it, because if this- if we're approving track map, that includes some of the improvements he's trying to move forward to, to get his homes completed by July. So there is some- there is some approval that we're doing tonight that basically negates us putting any additional conditions on this project.
Well, the project- the only portion of the project that can go forward is what was approved as part of the tentative track map approval process. That is when conditions of approval were imposed by the city, and I don't know if they addressed this particular issue or not, but even if they did not, the final map is not the time to impose conditions. We don't have the jurisdiction to do that at this time.
Well, maybe, but I've been here long enough that once you move the ball far enough, at some point, you can bring it back, because too many approvals have been taking place, and now time is of in essence and everything else. But I want to get some clarity a little bit on- because I'm looking at this map. Where exactly is the KB Home project?
It's at the corner of New Jersey and Citrus, running south to Orange.
Correct.
And then we sit both on the east side and on the west side of New Jersey.
Ah, I see, okay. And then, do you actually touch Orange on both sides as well?
We touch Orange at the south end.
No, yeah, that I understand. Okay, and that's the part I'm still not clear as to. The other property, where is it- where is it that you're complaining about, the water draining? I see, okay. So your property touches California?
You had your time. You had your time, okay.
Well, I'm just asking for clarity, so I just want to make sure I'm clear as to where this water's coming from, where and where it's going. So, okay.
Okay, now, let me respond to Mr. Bonneman's remarks. A full hydrology study was done when this project- before this project was approved, or preliminary. We completed another hydrology study following the tentative map, and part of our engineering improvement plans. We also included a retention basin on New Jersey Street to capture all the water coming south on New Jersey Street. So there's no water coming down and turning in the corner, as Mr. Bonneman implies. The water he's talking about is far south on New Jersey, completely detached from our project. Not even- and it's on the opposite side of the street. So that water's coming down New Jersey, making a left turn on the south side of Orange, not on the north side. So the water I'm capturing is on our side of the street. So the notion that somehow I'm adding additional water is totally false. Now, the engineering reports, the hydrology reports are filed with the city. He can pull those anytime he wants. So I don't understand. I think- I won't say anymore.
So help me understand something. So this water that's coming south on New Jersey, essentially it's going north from-
It's headed north, it makes a left turn.
And when it hits your property, what does it do?
It don't hit my property. It's on the opposite side of the street.
So it never goes on the other side of the street?
No, no, because-
That's what your reports show.
The streets like this.
Okay, I understand.
The water he's talking about makes a left turn in front of the Alzheimer facility.
I can see that, okay.
Makes a left turn on that side of the street. I'm capturing the water on my side of the street, and the water is coming down New Jersey, because it- New Jersey is moving north, and it's being picked up in a retention basin that we're building up there.
Okay.
So I don't know what- where this water is that he's talking about, because it's not coming from the opposite side of the street. I'm capturing the water on my side of the street. Any questions?
Now I get a better understanding of it. I'm curious to hear Mr. Bonneman's response to that.
Yeah, I think Mr. Bonneman is addressing an issue that was pre-existing, and has been going on for a long time, and he's using KB, holding us hostage to get something out of the city. That's the way I see it.
As the attorney, there's nothing we can approve tonight that's gonna hold you hostage. So I'm not exactly sure then who's- who am I following here? Because you're telling me I can approve this, and we could put conditions later, and you're telling me that I'm holding you hostage by not approving it. So I'm not exactly sure what the truth is now.
Well, the item before you tonight does not include an opportunity to impose conditions.
Correct.
It is a ministerial action that is based upon compliance with the previous terms of the subdivision that were approved on the prior public hearings and approvals. There were conditions of approval there, but the filing of the final map is a ministerial action. It's not a discretionary action, once staff has determined that there was compliance with the requirements for the final map, which is what the report states. So tonight is not the time to go back and readdress matters that were approved in the original subdivision, if drainage issues were addressed there. Even if they were not, they're not before us tonight as part of this item.
Yeah, I'm not sure I buy all that, but I want to hear Mr. Bonneman's responses to the water drainage.
Certainly.
So like I began with, we did not seek them out. They sought us. Because of the existing irrigation lines, they wanted-
Not true. We sought nobody out. Mr. Wellington approached us.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. They contacted me, asking for information about wheelboxes and irrigation lines, which we sat down, we marked up their maps for them, and we gladly gave them that information. During the review, which they generously gave us their plans to take a look at, to see how they would impact adjacent properties, I noted on Orange Street that, God, they're intercepting all this water that used to run downhill, south to north, and across the Orange Grove, and that I was concerned that it would be concentrated onto Laura's property, and her house sits lower than the street. Period. I asked how much water hits there. They sent back a one-page, hand-done hydrology study before the rough grading plan was done. This has been a while, and said, well, we're gonna take care- it's like point nine eight CFS, it's almost nothing. I said, well, what about all the other water that's coming south to north? Because as you all know, in the city of La Mirinda, the water runs south to north. They've ignored it. They went silent. They don't want to talk about it. They don't want to show it to us.
When you say south to north, south to north on what?
Well, I mean, basically, south to north on the whole city. As it comes down New Jersey, it takes a left down New Jersey, which he's right. It's on the south side of the street.
Okay.
But when your depth of flow is get so much, and you've got a big dip in the middle of Orange, it comes across and goes through the orange groves. I mean, that's what it looks like to me. And all we've asked is that they show us. Show us how it works. Show us that it's not gonna flood us. Because everything I see and walk out there, it looks like it's gonna stop all this water and send it right down her driveway. I don't know what else to tell you.
What's stopping the water?
The curb that they're putting in.
So coming over will create a further flooding and go onto your land?
That's what I think's going to happen.
Okay.
And I haven't- what they're doing, though, one other thing, is Orange Street has a big dip in it.
Before California?
Right in the middle, where their subdivision is. And what they're doing is they're taking that dip out. And so the water, instead of going through the dip through the orange grove, is now gonna go right down- Yes, yes.
Because it does flood there on Orange Street. I drive there a lot.
And I don't know- I mean, I'm not here to be a bully. I just- I don't want this to happen. Laura doesn't want it to happen. She'd rather cut it off.
We're five citizens up here, and none of us are engineers, and frankly, I don't think we're competent to identify what the solution is. I hear some competing facts on what is or is suspected to happen here. We need some kind of professional help to really sort this out, or look at the engineering plans again.
What I'd like is that this item be pulled, and you don't approve this until this is taken care of. That's what I'd like to see. I don't think it's too much to ask for. I think it's- would be prudent in the best interest of the city.
As a basis for pulling, which I understand we may not even be able to do from our-
Well, remember.
But all I have is your version of the facts, and I hear a somewhat different version from the KB representative.
Correct. The only reason I'm here is because we've got nowhere. So we're like, well, we're gonna go to this meeting tonight on Area D. Oh, gosh, there's this tract one nine nine six three. I better stay, at least say something, so it doesn't keep, like you say. I mean, it's hard to go backwards, and I'm not getting any- I'm not getting anywhere. So anyways.
Is there something more that you think we- forget KB for a second. Is there something that we, as a city, because Jarv just told us that you're requesting that he puts in a drainage along California. What is it that you think we can do as a city, not Mr. KB?
Oh, no, no. This is on KB. I don't think this is on the city. If I was putting in a subdivision in any city, and I was stopping water, concentrating it, I would have to put in a storm drain to the satisfaction of the city engineer. And if that was- had to include a storm drain from California Street, I'd have to put it in. We've done it dozens and dozens of times.
So you're saying we as a city should have-
I don't say this is a city problem. I see this as a KB Home problem.
I know, but before that, you're saying that we as a city should have made that condition as approval?
No, 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 no. You can't- you can't catch every condition in a tentative map. I mean, these are street improvement plans and storm drain plans that need to be done to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Okay.
And now, what we've done here is, it looks like they've- their engineers maybe overlooked this or ignored it, and it's not the city staff fault. It's, you know, we've just looked at it and said, you should do something about this, and they don't want to. And how many homes do they have? I've done seventy-two inch storm drain, hundreds of feet long for twenty-eight home.
Excuse me, excuse me. If you had the mic longer. We were not conditioned to put a storm drain, and that's been his agenda from day one. We're trying to capture the water on our side of the street.
Understood. And so my concern is, at the end of the day, it's seeming a little reminiscent of the storage place down the street here.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
We've had a very-
We're gonna be liable.
We've spent a lot of money dealing with flooding in this town, so it is a sensitive issue, so we want to make sure it's addressed properly.
Absolutely.
And the entire colonies fiasco was over.
Help me understand your connection to this whole thing. Do you have a house next door to the new development, or?
So you have a wonderful family, the Ramirez family. J.J. Ramirez has been in this area for a long, long time.
Sure.
His daughter Laura, she's the only child. She owns all these properties. Whenever a developer comes around, they always need something from her. So-
So why isn't she here?
She doesn't like- she doesn't like to come to things like this. It's easier for me to do it than her. So she's hired- it was first my dad. My dad passed away, and they liked me enough to do this for them. So I represent them. So I represent them. Yeah.
Engineer for Ramirez?
Yeah, we're civil engineers, planners, right, right. So we know, so are these technical things they ask us to do because, you know, we do it.
So, Mr. City Manager, what, I'm not asking you what we should do, but what, is there anything we can, what are the options that are before us right now? And, and it may be that we don't have any. I don't know, but I'm, I'm not an engineer and I hear a developer and an engineer not agreeing on some facts relative to current or potential flooding. I don't have a solution to it, but obviously something, somebody needs to sit in and take a look at this. It's not, but I'm not convinced the City Council's the right place to do it.
Sure. I think I'm getting direction from the city attorney that the tenant, the final tract map is not the, the place to have this happen. Running, running parallel with this, we are in the planning commission for the, the site approval, for the houses, the elevations, the sidewalks, all the stuff that goes with that. And that may be the right place where that argument can be made. You know, both these guys are here making verbal arguments. Just sitting here, I'd like to see some maps, some calculations, some drawings.
So I think that's where we all should be.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is that, what I'm hearing is that approving this final tract map does not give KB permission to evade all water. You know, should there be a water issue, evade all water responsibility.
It does not.
It does not. And there's a, there's a catch later in the process.
It will go to Planning Commission and then ultimately appeal back to you guys if there's not some resolution.
So, so it doesn't really come back to us at that point. Planning Commission and back to you guys and you guys figure it out. Is that what you're telling us?
It will, it will go to Planning Commission where we'll have an opportunity to see
I would
the, the information and the data from both sides. And then should either side not be satisfied with that, then there's an opportunity to bring it to City Council on appeal. And we've had those come back on appeal where, a couple of times where we couldn't find resolution and the council had to hear it. What we're trying to do is get this onto the right pathway, into the right group to look at it and bring it in, in a timely manner with the information we needed to study it.
Part of the problem, I would add, is that this sort of issue is exactly the type of issue that they should have brought to the original planning commission hearing on the subdivision, the tentative map. Now is not the appropriate time.
Just, I would like to hear, why is it that you're bringing it up to us? Because we've had this project go through multiple stages at this point.
So, two things. First off, this is the right time to do it. Because what they've done is they have bonded for their improvement plans. So, if they go back and what I'm saying is correct and they actually do need to do something significant, it would not be covered in the bonds that are being, covering the final map tonight.
Okay, doesn't move.
That's why I think you can't, that's why I think you can't do it yet.
Okay.
Number two, it's, we didn't really notice this problem until they gave us, until you start designing it. So they had street improvement plans designed, they started a rough grading plan and they came to us. And when I gave them my comments back and I marked it up and there was a couple of other things I marked up for them too, that's when it came to light.
So why is it that they have to show those plans to you?
Because they wanted to know where all the irrigation, because right where this happens is the irrigation line that crosses. Because it's all, all the Bear Valley water
I see, okay.
Irrigation lines. So they, they need to know where it was. I showed them where it was. It's right here at the end. And I looked at it, I go, "Well, where's all this water going? It's just, the curb stops." And that's when it came up.
Okay.
I'm very willing to make decisions, but I need evidence so that I've got a basis upon which I make a decision. I want to be fair to a developer that's elected to develop property in, in our city. But at the same time, whether there's a, if, if we're looking at, we have an engineer telling us we're looking at a potential flooding problem, we're gonna have to deal with that sooner or later. I don't know that it's gonna rain around here, you know, for another 10, 15 years. But sooner or later, we're gonna have to deal with it. And why put it off if, but I don't know if this is a real problem or it's being exaggerated. So I, I need more eviden, an evidence-based presentation with some unbiased expert opinions.
And it sounds like you need it in a different forum. Because this is not the place or the time.
What he's pointing out is that what we're approving is bonds that may not be enough to address his concerns. So in essence, there is some negative impact from approving this moving forward.
But bonding is just cash flow instrument. It's like any other insurance.
But there's a limit to it.
Yeah, but let, but, you know, if, if the engineering evidence shows that KB is liable for all kinds of flooding, they would fix it, whether they're bonded or not. Right? I mean, if there's an issue, you still retain the liability. Just because you haven't offloaded it on a bond, doesn't mean you, you give up the liability. So
And I wouldn't, I would not be here if they would have just, you know, we gave them everything they asked for. If they would have just shown this to us and given this to us, I wouldn't be here. If they would do it tomorrow and I could look at it and I could look at their numbers and the areas and how they calced it and it looks reasonable, I'd, I'd send an email to the city manager and say, "We're fine with it."
Yeah, I think we've probably thrashed it enough. And I think that, I think that forum for settling this is probably at the, at the Planning Commission and through the staff. Staff, I'm sure have heard loud and clear that we have concerns about water and they're gonna look at this carefully. But I think we need to proceed with item 16.
I, I do have one more question for clarity. So
What he wants is approval of item 16. He's not
Yeah, I, I agree. This is inappropriate time to discuss this. This should have been discussed a long, long time ago.
It's too late to fix it. Is that what you're saying?
And, and for Mr. Bonneman to come in here and do this at this point in time seems very unprofessional on his part. I think this could have been handled in a much better way. And by the way, it was Mr. Wellington who contacted us over his irrigation line. Says, "I'm concerned about my irrigation lines being damaged during constructions." I says, "We'll be glad to work with you. What would you like us to do?" He said, "Contact my attorney. We'll set up a meeting and we can sit down with my," I'm sorry, my engineer, not my attorney. And we went over at Mr. Wellington's request and met with his engineer, Mr. Bonneman. I brought my engineer. Okay? It was clear to us from the very outset that he had another agenda. And the agenda was a storm flow situation that was pre-existing long before KB ever showed up. And so I, again, I'm gonna repeat, I instructed my engineer to come up with a plan to capture the water on our side of the street, which he did. And he provided three parkway drains and an irrigation or a bio-retention swale on our side of the street to capture that water. As far as I'm concerned, we did our due diligence and we did our responsibility to take that water off the street.
And you're saying capturing water that flows from south of your property?
Flows south
From south of your property?
Yes.
Not flowing uphill from your property onto the street?
Well, actually, the water does flow to the north on New Jersey. And there's a retention basin up there that's part of our design to capture that water. So the water I'm talking about is the water that's on our side of the street on Orange Street. Not the water across the street.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I think we, I think, like I said, I think we've
Clarification. So if we move forward to this tract map, does Mr. Bonneman thinks he has an opportunity to fix this later or do you think that's too late?
It's not, it's not mine to fix. I'm just bringing it to your attention. I thought this would be a good time to do it because this is on the, on the agenda. If you take this forward tonight, all it does is it lets them, phew, all right, we got a little time and we're gonna, however they're gonna do it. If you don't pass it tonight, maybe it puts a little fire under them to do what they say they were gonna do and show us how they're not gonna flood her property.
My question to you is, if we pass it tonight and this item comes back in front of the Planning Commission, are you gonna continue to make those same concerns, appeal and come back to us?
Yeah, I don't want to. I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna keep coming back.
Clarity, okay.
Okay, so interestingly, this was on the consent calendar.
That's the normal place because it's a ministerial action.
But I find it interesting nonetheless. Yeah.
So just for clarifacasing, clarification, Mr. City Attorney. Your recommendation, based on protocol, is that we approve this. And how does it, how does this flooding issue get back to the Planning Commission to deal with it? Well, the issue that he's brought up is something that should have been addressed when the subdivision tentative map was originally approved. Yeah, I understand. That is when the public hearing process and the study takes place to address issues of that nature. The subdivision tentative tract map was approved. It's before you tonight for the final map based upon certification by staff that the applicant has complied with the requirements of the tentative map. And so it's a ministerial action where we formally approve it. But it's not a discretionary opportunity to go back and review the original subdivision approval or to impose new conditions. Now, what is still pending for the project before the Planning Commission is the final precise plan and design for the homes that will be built on the parcels to be subdivided. And that is somewhat of a discretionary approval process with some conditions of approval. Now, I'm not saying that that's completely reopening the original subdivision approval. That's not true either. But at, at least it's a context where there, the city does have more discretion to impose reasonable conditions related to that pending action. What's before you tonight pursuant to the subdivision map act does not give you that opportunity to revisit the original approval.
Now, is it not part of their, Will Dan's responsibility when we refer work for these engineering reports and so forth to address these kinds of issues?
Yes, and, and staff works with the outside agencies. I'm not sure who did the review on this. Job may.
No, no, it's Jeff Peterson, my staff.
Oh, I thought
No, that's, that's landscape assessment. That's LMD, that's what
Okay, okay.
Well, as, as non-standard as it is to review it at the time of the final tract map and as non-standard as it is to review it at the time of the specific plan approval process, it is even more non-standard to approve it, to, to deal with this in the Superior Court. So I don't want to end up there and I, and I, there's a strong admonition from us to have this settled at the Planning Commission level. And I'm sure if it's not, we'll hear about it again. But I think we need to proceed with this because this is not the appropriate time. I think it's great that we had this discussion. I've learned a lot. Sorry that it was at the emotional expense of both parties. But, but it's a very interesting discussion. I've had a grand time. Sorry that it wasn't so good for you.
I, I still need some clarity because I'm looking at the analysis and it says, "This map dedicates interior streets for the public use as well as additional right-of-way dedication along the adjacent street frontage as required. Off-site improvements have been designed." So my question to the city attorney is, if this item comes back again in front of, in front of the Planning Commission, can those off-site improvements be changed? Not the specific where the houses are and like that, but the off-site improvements. Can those design be changed?
Well, it is a discretionary approval process and if there are matters related to the design that are brought to the attention of the Planning Commission, that can be an appropriate time and
Not, not brought up, but actually made.
Some of the features of the, the homes being built could relate to water runoff and
It's all better than the Superior Court. Because that's, I don't want it going there.
No.
I mean, people can bring stuff up all the time. The question isn't about bringing it up. My question is, if someone makes a legitimate case, whether it's the right time or not, can at a later time make that same case and can the body that has to make the decision add additional conditions? So I, I'm trying to get clarity as to whether that's gonna happen at the Planning Commission or not. Because what, what I'm afraid is gonna happen is he brings it up at the Planning Commission and you're gonna say, "Too late."
I, I would say that, at the Planning Commission meeting that we just held, there were some concerns raised. One of it, which had to do with the retention basin and there were, there was some discussion as to matters beyond merely the architectural design. And staff was working with the applicant to address some of those issues. I assume they could discuss this as well in that context. And that, I believe, although not the ideal forum, is better than tonight's. The, the appropriate forum was when the subdivision was approved, when notice was given to neighboring property owners and when apparently they did not raise this.
But you're telling me that, telling me that it's too late. That's what you're really telling me. They should have done it before. Now you just need to go through the motions. That's what I'm hearing. So I, I just want to get clarity that I can approve this tract map and if Mr. Bonneman is correct and maybe there is some stuff they could be doing, then those things can be addressed. Or are we gonna have the same conversation at the Planning Commission? "Oh, the tract map hasn't been approved. He should have come in three months earlier. All you guys are designing is, are the houses look nice." And then we're having the same conversation.
What's the harm in putting this off to our next council meeting?
No, this is, I assume have not, we, we still have not approved the off-site improvement, the street improvement. I assume not signed it. So, so, so the answer to your question is now that I'm aware of it.
But there's a sentence in here about that.
Well, I just wanna, I understand the sentence. I just want to make sure that if, if I move forward with this tonight, there's still an opportunity to make changes if they're needed. Maybe, maybe we, maybe the KB homes is right and you're wrong and that's the end of argument.
That's right. See So, excuse me, if I, if what Job just said, I had not heard it earlier, which is, he has not yet signed off on the final off-site improvements. Even though they're bonded to do that. If that's the case
Which part I signed, I can't remember.
Well, we need clarification maybe. So what, what if we just
All the improvement plans have been signed off and approved. I bonded based on those approvals.
I, I don't think we even have to get involved in this. We can let city staff fight it out. But if we don't approve this thing, then it comes back in two weeks.
I, I agree. I just, I just want to make sure that, how do you call it, it gets addressed because Mr. Bonneman is not calling me individually, but he's came in front of all of us to make us aware of this. He may have a case, he may not, but we also want to make sure the staff addresses it.
The, the appropriate time to address this, if we're going to address it again, would be at Planning Commission. Because you can, there were new conditions added this last round, were there not? The non-portable water, which was not included in the original, and that was added. So we can address this at a time. We will be glad to deal with it, work with staff. Mr. Bonneman needs to talk to staff. And we'll get it worked out. I'm not concerned about not getting it worked out. I, this is not the time to do it, guys.
What I understand is, why is today not a day to address those concerns?
I think your attorney made it clear.
Well, but I want to hear from you as the applicant. What is it, what is gonna hurt you if I just have to wait another two months on this?
The precise plan design is done at Planning Commission. That's where you can add additional conditions of approval, which they've already added.
But we're not asking to do any of that. What I'm saying is, what's the harm to you as a developer if we're not comfortable with what's in front of us?
The harm to me as a developer, I have a schedule and we're talking multiple million dollars of projects that needs to move forward. I, this, this would be a disaster.
So if your schedule changes and if it's in front of the Planning Commission and that Planning Commission makes you do even more changes, then your delay doesn't
This is an off-site improvement. It's not gonna happen for at least five or six months.
So I still don't understand how us not approving it tonight somehow hurts you five, six months.
Well, no, I have to start internal work. I've got water and sewer to put down in track.
So you're dealing with water issues after this gets approved?
No, I'm saying I have improvement plans. I got water and sewer that I need to start underground work on.
That you can't do without approval of this?
I can, yeah, I can do that. Once I get this map, then I can go ahead and get permits and start the water and sewer in tract. The off-site tract improvements aren't going to start in the next month or two. Those are months down the road.
I think we still have whatever leverage is necessary later.
Well, I would like to agree with you, but I'm, you know, I'm sensitive to water issues given our history. And I know there's two different engineers with two different opinions, and I agree with Mr. Daley about how we're not in a position to determine who's right and who's wrong. My only concern is that if one party's wrong, I want to make sure that that gets resolved or we're not going to get to the same thing as like, "Well, it should have been brought up before. This is too late. My staff doesn't agree with you," and end of argument, you know? I'd rather have on record city staff telling me, "Mr. Bonneman is wrong. We reviewed these plans. The developer's right." End of argument. We shouldn't even have this discussion. But I'm not getting a clear answer from staff to make me indicate that we're in a position to make the right decision. That's my concern tonight.
I think when Ron says "water," he's meaning water and pipes, not stormwater runoff. So he's doing, underground water, underground sewer.
But I'm just hopeful that after this episode, we get some clarity from city that this issue has been resolved. Maybe not to Mr. Bonneman's satisfaction, but at least addressed more clearly than it has been so far.
I support that, and I support you, and I support a no vote at this point also.
It sounds like everybody's all in agreement on the course that we need to do.
No, I don't think so. I don't think we're in agreement. I think we're not believing that it's actually going to get addressed at the planning commission. And so our fear is if we let it slip through now, then it doesn't get addressed and it doesn't get properly managed the way we believe it needs to be managed. And again, not weighing in on one or the other, but just getting the facts. So that is, and if that's not Obie's concern, that is my concern.
And I think you summarized it properly.
But it seems like all signs point from what the staff is saying, what the city attorney is saying, what both these people are saying. All signs are pointing back to going back to the planning commission and having them work it out. So I don't understand why we're just going around and around.
And if it's not to their satisfaction, appeal to us. I think it'll come back if it doesn't get resolved.
The only question is whether this gets approved tonight or approved some other time. But it's going back to the city council, so let's make the decision.
Yeah, and to me, to my mind, you know, you can build the entire project and then do this afterwards. This is a storm drain thing that's, you know, it can be part of the conditions of approval. You can put all kinds of weird conditions on there that are not directly related to a specific plan. I agree with that part. And I think we should just go ahead, and I'm going to support approving this thing tonight, and then we'll fight this another day. And it sounds like there are two no votes, and there are two yes votes, and I don't know about.
My name is Mr. Bonneman.
The tiebreaker.
Can I just say one more thing?
Go ahead. Might as well.
I don't think this is a condition thing. It's not. You're not posing any additional conditions on the project. All you're doing is making them do the improvements that they said they're going to do to the satisfaction of the city engineer and to standard engineering practices. If it means putting, and I'm not saying they have to, if it means putting in a storm drain for 300, 400 feet, then they have to do that. I mean, you don't have to have an additional condition.
If we put a curb and gutter along the north side of.
Orange.
What is this?
You guys can appreciate all this stuff.
But it sounds like that's what he's saying. He's saying, "I don't want a decision tonight." What he's saying is, "I want the evidence."
All they, they've had months. All they had to do was show it to us. I wouldn't be standing here. And I'm sorry it's taken so long, but if you move this tonight, I have no carrot to do anything with it because they don't want to show it to me. They don't want to. He's already told you they haven't dealt with the south side of the street. It came out of his own mouth. And if they don't deal with the south side of the street and the water comes to the north side of the street, which it does, then it's going to flood. I think, but I might be wrong.
Both Councilman Pobesko and I both have said, "We're not taking any sides on this thing. We just don't see the urgency." And if this is leverage to make sure that, number one, people don't get harmed, property doesn't get damaged, and we don't get sued, that's the position I'm going to take.
Exactly.
Okay, so I think we need to have a separate vote on item 16. I don't think we can wrap this into the consent calendar. So let's go ahead and deal with item 16.
Separate from the.
Separate from the consent calendar. And we're doing them out of order. So we'll do 16, then we'll do eight through 15. So what's the motion?
I thought, I thought either.
I'm not made a motion. I thought for you guys to be.
Your motion is to vote against it.
Their motion is to do nothing, which doesn't require a motion.
Okay, all right. So I will move approval of item 16. And you can tell me if I'm out of order, but I would like to refer this issue specifically back to the planning commission so that they do deal with it in whatever the proper way can be defined.
That would be appropriate to review it, have the planning commission review the issue, and to have staff work with the applicant and Mr. Bonneman to address any concerns within the context of that planning commission hearing.
That's my carefully worded.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a second. Any further discussion? Please no.
When is the planning commission meeting on this item?
The first Wednesday of next month, whatever the date is.
Okay. Even though I'll vote against it, I'd like to get a report specifically how this item was addressed when we get to the next council meeting.
It will be on the seventh, and we will give you a report on the 13th.
Of March?
March.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, if you do it the next meeting, there will only be three of us here. So there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no?
No.
Okay, it passes three to two. So the issue has not gone away, but it has been kicked down the road a bit.
To a more competent panel, hopefully.
Yes, well, a more appropriate panel. So items eight through 15, consent calendar, is there any pleasure of the council?
How was it? A second?
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion on the consent calendar?
Just clarity on number 14. Where is, okay, so this is located on Bremis Boulevard? Is this parking lot?
This is the old.
Across the street from.
This is Christiansen's.
This is the old antique mall. And Spreen Honda has purchased that to do expansion of their service and car storage areas.
So how many cars are anticipated that are going to be parked there?
About 180. And then the existing, if you drive by, they've cleaned up the building, put in new glass.
So they're keeping the same building?
They're keeping the same building. Their second phase.
They're up to be.
They're cleaning it up. They're not really doing any work to it. Their ultimate goal in the long run is they'd like to consolidate their repair and service into one area and get some room for an additional dealership, and this is kind of steps along that way.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, is there any opposition? Hearing none, the balance of the consent calendar is approved unanimously. Item number 17, we have a joint meeting, city council, and I'm opening the housing authority for this joint meeting, and the special counsel is unrepresented.
Luckily, I didn't ask him to be here, but Conrad.
We're saving the money. I'll represent special counsel who's representing us.
Would he have charged us for all of this?
He gets more than our city attorney. That's all I'm saying.
A lot more.
Yeah, and he's actually here.
So in a nutshell, we had several scattered site properties as part of the housing agency throughout the city. Mary Erickson Housing, it was given the property on the end of Juanita Street, five lots to develop, and then those scattered sites to sell to create seed money for the development process for low-income housing. There's a house, a property off of Poplar Street that upon detail and looking at when it hit the market, is really an unsellable property. The improvements required are really more than the value of the land. So there was one additional property that was not part of these scattered sites.
This. Yes, this is. Correct.
This is almost at Redlands Boulevard. The property we're talking about is one lot south of Redlands Boulevard. And the individual purchasing that, there's a real small lot on the corner. There's a couple of real weird-shaped lots in there. So he's purchasing that to try and assemble a corner location. Since the revenues from the other Poplar Street property weren't enough to bridge for Mary Erickson, staff is recommending that we redirect the proceeds from the sale of the northerly Poplar Street property to Mary Erickson so they can get enough seed money to begin their project.
So we're redoing the deal and taking money from another property to offset the one that they can't.
Correct. The one that was, the money currently is slated to go back to the housing authority. And what we're really doing is just redirecting those proceeds to the Mary Erickson project.
I see, okay.
Okay, what do you want? Nope, no public hearing.
For once, no public hearing. We're moving money around and there's no public hearing. I'll make the motion.
Okay, that's on both bills. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Any reports of councilmen? Okay, there's a brief presentation regarding our city water system from the Public Works Department.
Yes, I was hoping that the board member from Ward District and the water conservation and my staff will be here, but I guess they left.
They missed all the excitement.
So since tonight we talk about our water system, about the water conservation, so I want to talk, let the council be aware of how our water system work. Sorry, kind of small, but little reference, this is I-10 freeway. This is Mountain View going north to the airport, and this is Richardson going north. And in between is Cooley Avenue. So this is the location of our city water wells. We have wells along Cooley, along Richardson, and one south of the freeway, and one west of Mountain View. Okay? And so what it does is the pump the water from Bunker Hill Basin, which is close to the Santa River, and go up Richardson, which is, we have an existing 18-inch water line, and another 20-inch water line that come up, Mountain View. That currently we're working with the SBCTA for the train track that's going to go from downtown San Bernardino to University of Redlands of, we're going to redo this pipeline. And then the IVDA will be doing this pipeline, crossing the channel and the railroad track at this location. So our, for 2017, our average daily demand is about 4.5 million gallons per day, meaning the peak demand during the month of July and August is about 6 million gallons per day. Where does water going? The water come up on Richardson and Mountain View go up to our reservoir, which majority of them is in the South Hill. Two of them on Hutter Crooks Park is underground, one up further at Hutter Crooks Park. We have one at Anderson Way that kind of tied to University of Loma Linda tank. They have 2 million gallons that sit next to one another. And we have a cross connection between the two. We have 100,000 gallon reservoir that kind of serve this upper area here. So we have a cross connection between the city of Loma Linda and city of Redlands. We also have cross connection between the city of Loma Linda and city of San Bernardino at this location and at Redlands and Anderson Street. Okay? So what we do is we pump the water at night on all these wells because the electricity rate is cheaper, and we fill up the reservoir at night. And then during the day, it's all gravity flow south, which is down here. I'm north, I'm sorry. And right now we have five pressure zones. We have zone one, zone one A, zone two A, zone two and three. And this is how the reservoir kind of feed, you know, this area feed down here, and this one feed over here and so forth. So that's a quick overview of our water system. And to say again, what happened tonight is we are still in drought. For example, this year, we only have rain for a third time today. That's it. And so we need a lot of water.
Jarb, I brought it up at our workshop, but can we get some more clarity on what access we have to the water in the former redevelopment agency land? Because apparently.
No.
I want to get some clarity on that because there's water coming to water those orange groves. So who's paying for that and where's that water coming from?
That's a different, that's a surface flow. So for the surface flow, we have two source.
No, no, no. He's talking about.
He's talking about. Ramirez has bare water.
Oh, no, it's a surface flow. It's what it is, is, I'm sorry, all of this are groundwater. And we sink the well and pump it up. The.
Bear Valley.
Bear Valley is actually from Lake Arrowhead owned by city of Redlands that come down.
Yeah, and the Ramirez family owns water shares.
Right, and we do too.
And that's what they've been watering the groves with.
He's saying we do as well.
We do too, we do too.
So we access that water in addition to these wells?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I get clarity. I guess then my next question is, what does that access mean? Does it mean that we share in?
That water, that's the question you asked earlier. That water belonged to city of Redlands.
Okay.
It's for irrigation. So we had to purchase the water from city of Redlands for use for irrigating the orange grove.
Which at this point.
It's a non-potable water.
Correct, but at this point, we're not paying for that.
But we are. We still have orange grove that we are paying. Yes, yes, all of this, there's the piece.
I thought Ramirez paid for it.
Yeah, well, we talked about how the cost, the proceeds from the oranges were not high enough to offset the cost of the water.
Correct, right, right. In the past, yes, in the past, the sale of orange was enough to pay for the maintenance and the water. And not anymore. Now they only maintain a small little piece.
I thought we refused to pay the extra for the water, elected to allow the oranges to die.
Yes.
And then Ramirez came in and rescued us and did it anyway.
No.
So we're paying after all.
No, we're not paying because the orange is going to die. We have been watering.
But they haven't died, they're still green.
Yeah, it's taking a little while.
They've got long roots.
But my understanding is that the oranges and the redevelopment land are still being harvested. You're saying they're not?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. So I'm.
There's one, there's one small section along Mission Road of about 17 acres. That is, the remainder, we've stopped watering it, although it's still green. This summer, when it warms up, it won't be anymore.
And the 17 acres that does have fruit that does get harvested, who's taking care of?
That Ramirez is.
So Dusty is right, they are helping.
Small portion, yes, small portion, yes.
So what happens? Fire rangers?
Well, we're in this process of getting a grant from the state to remove all that.
As part of the ROPS for redevelopment, we submitted aerial spray, a cost for aerial spraying, which Department of Finance had questions about. We directed them to the Department of Agriculture, who the two department heads have now had some chance to discuss. And the Department of Agriculture, the State Department of Agriculture is working on finding a grant for us to remove those trees because technically we don't have to spray because we're not harvesting fruit or exporting it. However, they're concerned about so many trees in the middle of a quarantine zone and an outbreak not being treated. However, they're concerned about so many trees in the middle of a quarantine zone and an outbreak not being treated. So, um, they're, they're trying to work with us to figure out a way to get a grant to get those trees pulled.
And we have to spray our growth, like the, in the park and, and so forth, so.
Before we go to successor and housing authority agendas, I, I had one question I was going to ask during reports from councilmen. I forgot to see it. Are, the city of Loma on Beaumont...
Yes, sir.
Going east. The eastern boundary of our property is at the railroad track?
Yes, sir. Right there. Only on the north side. So...
Okay, yeah, no, I, that I knew.
Yes.
South side, but the eastern part is basically along the railroad tracks.
Yes, sir.
Because the, because if you continue on Beaumont over the railroad tracks...
City of Redlands.
It's bad and getting worse. Is that...
Nevada Street.
Nevada Street is, is the end of our, our sphere.
We do have a little bit of road there.
Once, once you cross the tracks...
It's a county.
Once you cross the tracks, you are out of the city limits.
It's in the sphere.
The sphere of influence starts at Nevada, so currently that area, and I don't know where, Redlands may start at Santa Mateo. That may be County Road, and that segment between the tracks and Nevada is county.
Between, between Bridge and Nevada is county?
Yes.
That's it. A little short thing, and it's fine. That road is fine. They own it, they own it. It is annexed. It is, it is. I checked it.
Yeah, he went through that.
I checked it.
This is, this is, this is Beaumont.
I checked it because I, I was, I was putting pressure on the county to fix that horrible road, and then found out it was Redlands.
And this is the city boundary. It's right here. And this is Brenmar. So on the south side is the county, and so this point right here is where the city boundary end. And when you pass from, from the railroad track to...
New Jersey.
New Jersey, and up New Jersey, that, that's a county, but in the city sphere.
Or is it Nevada? Is it Nevada?
Ease of that i- is, is Redlands.
It is Redlands. Yes, it does, because if you go up, Taylor's Bar is on the left side of Nevada, because remember...
Okay, yeah, if you go far in...
Nevada, New Jersey, whichever one it is. The road comes over.
So our sphere of influence, make sure I'm clear, ends at Nevada. After that, it's Redlands.
Correct.
Wow, okay.
And it's county in between until we annex it.
On the north side of Beaumont.
Correct, correct.
So I'm assuming if they couldn't afford to help us with Californian Redlands intersection, then they're not going to be interested in Beaumont ever?
Well, they...
Well, they're out there pothole filling it, and they're putting big metal sheets over it.
Because they fix a leak. They, so...
Yeah.
From what I understand is, I talked to City of Redlands, they're supposed to replace that pipeline, and, and, and after we replace this pipeline, and then they will fix the street.
But when are they going to make it a street instead of just, uh, an alley? I mean, you don't just put asphalt on top of a flood zone and expect it to have a road.
When the property develop and then the developer have put...
It needs, it needs a proper road bed and proper engineering. What, what we've got there is, is an asphalt layer on top of, of soggy dirt. It's like, it's like laying asphalt over, over the, the Everglades and expecting it to be a nice road.
I, I was almost hoping it would, part of it would be Loma Linda.
I have been, I've been lobbying the councilman from Redlands for a long time. I told him, this is an embarrassment to your city. Do their trash trucks go down that road? And if so, they've got money for it, because that's how they're paving their streets. They're charging their trash hauling concession for their street improvements.
They, they have trash trucks to go.
I want to report that, uh, the next city council is, is February the 27th, and where we go over the mid-year budget review.
Why, why is it that you're not doing that on the 13th?
Be, be, because...
It doesn't matter, two more weeks?
Well, but the thing is, both of you on, are you around this Thursday? There's a budget committee meeting that you can attend.
That's on my agenda.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious, does it ma- so we're doing a whole city council meeting just to review the budget?
Mid-year budget, yes.
And does it really matter whether it's done at the end of February versus beginning of March?
I'm looking, we'll just have a longer meeting in March. If we did.
We do it in March. We think, I'm, I'm with the finance director. And we do it in March, okay?
That's fine.
If there was any additional appropriations that, um, staff was waiting for approval in the mid-year budget, they would just be delayed.
Well, are there?
Yeah, that's my question.
Yes, there are.
Oh, they are. So there is, there is an urgency as to why you want to do it. That's why I want to get clarity. Because normally, we don't add meetings until there's something that has to have approval. Okay, okay. That's what I want to get clarity on. That's fine.
And if we wait till March, we'll have to call it the two-thirds year budget review.
We have a lot of items that, that tree trimming that we need to trim before the, the windstorm.
That's fine, that's all.
Okay, so March?
Two weeks.
February 27th.
Two weeks from tonight. Okay, we do have some more items to cover. Are we done with everything from reports? Okay, the city council is adjourned, and our next city council meeting is listed as February 27. We have our Loma Linda Housing Authority, which we opened earlier. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on non-agenda items? Hearing none. Uh, consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Any further discussion? Uh, hearing none. Those, is anybody opposed? Hearing none. It's approved unanimously. We already did item three. Any chair member, member reports? Any reports of officers? Hearing none. We're adjourned. The next item is, the next agenda is the successor agency to the RDA. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public? None. Consent calendar?
Move it.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved unanimously, and we are adjourned. Thank you for coming. Feel free to take advantage of our light and air conditioning for another five minutes, and then we're out of here.